All right, good morning, everybody. We are back. We have got an adjustment to our agenda. We're gonna jump right into public health and see where they've, see what they've got for us.
Okay.
Super.
Super duper.
Okay, so I brought with me today Jacob Rudner, who's worked with us, well, he's worked for us. On, on our smoke response for, um, down north with the, the Bear Grylls fire.
I live.
So, um, you, you have the materials in your packet. But we brought in, what, three truckloads?
Yeah, uh, we did three orders of twenty-four machines each order.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and then Kitsap actually.
What type of machines?
They are air purifiers meant for a, I would say, an average-sized room. Um, and the, uh, air filters for them as well, replacement filters. Um, we received them from the Department of Health. Um, at no cost to us, no cost to the people receiving them, no requirement to return them. So, uh, works out really well for all of our people. Um.
You're saying we had, got some from Kitsap as well?
Yeah, so, um, on one of my state meetings, I had mentioned that we were delivering the, getting these out to people. And, um, Kitsap Public Health spoke up and said, hey, we've got some in storage, would you like them? So, of course.
Well, heck yeah.
Yeah, we did.
Yeah, sure.
So ultimately, we ended up dispersing eighty-four, uh, air purifiers to people up in, mostly in the Lake Cushman area. Um, few in Hoodsport, one in somewhere around Sheldon. Um, but so we collaborated with, uh, Hoodsport, Hoodsport Fire and EMS as our distribution location. They came over to my office, picked up the machines, got them out to people. Um, so it was a really good collaboration. Um, we had help from Tammy at DEM for getting the orders placed through WebEOC. Um, when we were determining how to disperse them, um, we had gotten some forms from Northeast Tri Public Health. Um, and adapted them for our county. Um, so we had an income household size, uh, limit for
Okay.
how we would disperse them. Um, and we put out one Facebook post ourselves. Um, Hoodsport Fire had shared it as well. But a lot of our people that came, they came as neighbors and they came as families. Um, so a lot of word of mouth for where to get these and what was going on. In fact, the, uh, chief up at Hoodsport Fire told me one day that they actually had two people go in because their doctors had suggested they go and try and see if there were any available.
Yes.
Um, so getting it out was really effective through the fire station. And really, we were able to help eighty-four households.
That's awesome. That's really cool.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Anything else?
So we don't have to store them.
Yes, they kind of filled it up my office.
Yeah.
That's good.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's awesome.
Yeah.
And to be able to provide that to people, that's huge.
Yeah.
Yeah, so often in the, in the fires, it takes a while to get the pipe, you know, supply line filled and coming.
Mm-hmm.
And then sometimes it takes a while to get it shut off. But this time it worked pretty well. We were able to, um, order on demand and get things out pretty quickly.
Most orders were here within twenty-four hours.
Wow, that's awesome.
So, so since COVID, the, that procedure and that way of managing resources has been much better. We got a lot of practice during COVID, so.
A lot of practice.
Okay, the other thing I had, um, before we jump over to Melissa, is we're going to do it all staff on Friday, October thirty-first.
And I really, really hope that you guys are dressing up.
Yeah, so we're gonna have a little bit of fun. We're gonna get two buildings together since we don't get a, a chance to interact that much. So we're gonna do some, some activities there. And then I'm gonna talk to everybody, talk with everybody about budgets and, and what I'm forecasting and what I'm hearing at the state. And it was a very bumpy week last week, so I just want to make sure that we get the right information out to everybody. Um, and, and a lot of it at this point is forecasting. So, uh, but it's, it's better to get everybody on the same sheet of music and, and talk to them. And, and we'll do, like I said, a few exercises and kind of get prepped to do a, um, we're doing, when is the smoke exercise?
Um, we haven't set a date.
We're gonna do a tabletop exercise, uh, and bring the two, two sites together to do a, like a smoke response, which we kind of already did. But, uh, we're making it a little bit bigger, so, uh, just an all-staff. And, and we try to get those done twice a year. We're a little, a little bit behind this year, so. And with your approval, we're gonna get that set.
Well, I'm not hearing those.
Okay. Okay, so we'll, we'll coordinate that through Kami and make sure the notices go out to everybody.
Good.
So, what, we will keep file records open.
Oh, good.
Yeah, so that, that always, you always keep that open, so.
And they can get those online too, right?
Well, they order them online and they can get them mailed to them, or they can order them online and pick them up at, at the office. So, um, uh, we've got quite a few people still come into the office and then we, we use the online app while they're at the counter.
Mm-hmm.
And actually, we can hand them a, um,
Tablet.
tablet, and they can do it on tablet right there. So.
Yeah, I think it's important that we start using technology, so I appreciate you guys doing that.
Yeah.
Um, we're in Mason County for it, I love it.
In fact, I briefed the, uh, uh, State Board of Health for an hour on Wednesday. Really all about how do you take technology integrated into public health? And what are the pitfalls, what are the, the places where we can, can make things work? And kind of expanded, used Mason County as the example of how we're starting to use technology.
Okay.
And expanded that across the state, what can be done in other jurisdictions and how you can build partnerships and, and things around technology.
Yeah, Mason County's so young too, that using technology is great because we have waters, we have mountains, we, we have, it's hard to drive across the canal.
Right, exactly. It's, you know, if, if we can get people healthcare where they live, um, that's much more efficient than people driving hours to appointments, so. So it's, it's things for, that we're exploring.
Okay.
Okay, Melissa?
Okay, I have for you today, a request for a proposal for overnight adult, single adult emergency shelter. Um, so we've talked about this a few times in the past. We discussed it a little bit more in detail. Um, I think last month, as you know, we didn't receive any applications from the RFP that we released in the spring. So there was a reserve that was held back enough to hopefully fund an emergency shelter here by wintertime. Um, so we went through, um, and created an application, um, a request for proposal with the minimal amount of questions that we would need to know. We went through this with the Housing and Behavioral Health Advisory Board. Um, really just wanting to know who our applicants are. Um, minimal information in terms of their experience and just what their capacity, um, is to be able to get an emergency shelter stood up pretty quickly. Um, and that's pretty much all. Uh, we made it very simple. Um, so the ask here is, um, hoping to be able to read the news release so that we can release it tomorrow. Um, I know it's not ideal. We'd like to have things go to the next action agenda. But, uh, just because of the timeline and we're, I mean, it's snowing apparently in some parts of the county already. Um, wanting to get this stood up as quickly as possible. And I'm actually really pleased. I've gotten a lot of calls and emails from several different entities over the last few weeks who have kind of heard that we may be releasing something. So I, I think we may have some applicants to actually review and maybe, um, a little competition here, so. Any great questions about commissioners?
If, if there is, uh, keep us in the loop early so we know the entities and, and make sure that you make us aware of any, any issues we've had with the entities in the past before we go to make any hard decision like that?
There's a, a bit of a risk assessment that's built in, uh, to the actual application. Um, and we've set, so just knowing that, you know, maybe we might not get applications right off the bat, or it may take some time. We set it for a two-week turnaround time for the first kind of review of applications. And if we don't receive anything that is up to par or everyone's comfortable with contracting with, we'll keep it open until it's filled.
Also need to double-check that whatever we decide to fund, if we, if we do decide to fund something, that it, uh, is allowed within the zoning and stuff.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, and the other thing we have to check is, is any department status.
Yes.
Oh, yes, yeah, that's part of our.
Yeah, you remember that?
I do, I do.
Yeah.
Yes, please do. I did see that it's already, um, eight point nine on the agenda for tomorrow.
So everyone's okay with that being moved to tomorrow?
Okay.
But we're not accepting one, but, but it's kind of, the only thing we're doing is putting it on the agenda though.
To read the news release and release.
Out of curiosity, why is it on the extra agenda?
Do we need to read the news release?
We've got our, well, we, no, we have to approve the request for the RFPs.
But I thought we had already done that for the other. Didn't you save the one, then we didn't get anything back?
Um, technically, but this is a different, this is a very specific application for the overnight emergency shelter.
Okay.
And it was changed.
Yeah, so it's very targeted. The scope of service is very targeted to that.
Okay, okay.
And I think because it was changed, we still wait to, to follow that process, so, okay.
Okay, and then Commissioner, you had questions on lead?
So, the first week, we sat there and we decided to, we were gonna hold off and we're gonna have you brief it and then we would pass it. But then it was on the agenda to pass, I was like, okay. Now it's back on the agenda, so there's two of them at night or a thousand?
There's two, so we have a contract with the healthcare authority. Mason County is the lead, or, let me use a different word for that, that can be confusing. We're the primary contractor with the healthcare, so the healthcare authority contracts with Mason County to provide lead services. We subcontract with the provider, similar to housing, where we contract with, um, commerce, but then we subcontract the services to service providers. We subcontract with a behavioral health service provider to actually do the case management and the day-to-day work. And we just kind of oversee the contract, the subcontract, and the deliverables to the state. So there's two pieces to it. So the contract with the healthcare authority was approved, I don't know what date it was, several weeks ago. I did not bring the subcontract until after the contract with the healthcare authority was approved. But I believe you may have had questions about the subcontract, which would go to Olympic Health and Recovery Services, their service provider. We retain, um, I want to say about a hundred and twenty thousand, just for administration, so my time, staff time, finance time, and then the rest of it will go to the service provider for their FTE, so they have case managers. They also have, um, mental health professionals and then, you know, any of their overhead vehicles, mileage. And then, um, that also includes client support. So sometimes it's a little bit of rental assistance, any other things that clients need to just.
So the same thing, just a different part of it?
Yes.
Okay, so on the lead, the question I had for that first one a couple of weeks ago was the lead program has, in my opinion, has kind of been a failure over the, the years, but yet we're still gonna do this. But it's because it's money coming from commerce and it's gonna be redirected out no matter what anyway. Uh, is that what you're saying? Because to spend our money to do something that is not.
It's from from healthcare authority.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, so honestly, this is the conversation I've had with the service provider a lot over the last few years. And I think there's, there's opportunities with messaging and with how we, we not promote the program, but celebrate the successes of it, because I would disagree that it's been unsuccessful. I think the landscape has changed a lot. We've had, the co, the law enforcement co-responder program was implemented, I think about two years ago, which was so successful for the sheriff's office where they applied for a grant to expand that. Um, law enforcement assisted diversion, you would think a lot of the, a lot of the referrals would come from law enforcement. Because of the co-responder program, they are still kind of coming from law enforcement. It's just that the co-responder team is dispatched to, to see people onsite more than law enforcement is. And they are actually making most of the referrals in the.
Well, and that's where it was not working. It was your staff that brought that to us and, and showed us that it wasn't. We're having discussions with the sheriff's department. The sheriff's department was saying they weren't even doing it really at the time either. Uh, but this is something different and, and there's, you're telling me you have people on the ground that are making that thing work regardless of whether or not it goes through the sheriff's department?
Yes, and another thing that we did start talking about with the prosecutors last year was pre-filing diversion. So before, because the whole purpose is not only to reduce the burden on law enforcement, but the court system as well. I think, as you know, there's a huge shortage in attorneys. Um, so how do we completely, if it's a case that's appropriate, if it's, um, somebody who is an appropriate candidate for the program, how do we divert it from completely entering the justice system through case management, through getting people's needs met? Um, and I think that's something that we didn't really quite get off the ground as much as we wanted to last year. But I think we're well-positioned to start that again this year.
And we all met together trying to figure out what to do with it, with the caseloads that we're gonna change. Uh, the entities got together, you had the prosecutor's office, you had public defender, you had the sheriff's department stuff. That's where they were showing that that was a failure at that point. But if you're saying this is something different, then please show us in the next year what comes out of this, what the benefits are. So if we can go forward and keep them separated, uh, knowing the successes from the parts that don't work.
Will do.
And I've had, I've heard good things about it, so I, I wouldn't say that it was, it's down here.
But we need to get the KPIs.
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Yep. Yep, I agree with that. I a hundred percent agree with that.
Yeah. So last, I just had a couple of quick budget updates. Um, as of November first, our maternal-child health block grant, we can no longer bill to because that's a federal, um, program. So we have a person working half-time in that, have to reassign that. Uh, President Trump has said that he was going to be funding WIC out of tariffs. So we're, there's been another tranche of money that's come in and we're expecting WIC to kind of continue. We'll keep the wheels on the cart, but the cart's not gonna be moving very fast for a while, but we'll, we'll keep it going. Um, and the, the third thing is, um, and I don't know if we've discussed this before, but for foundational public health services, part of our money is coming to us from the vape tax. Okay, which I had said years ago, don't do that. And I had a number of reasons for that. That, that anytime you attach funding to a sin tax, if the sin tax works, you don't get your funding anymore. What happened this spring is that the legislature redefined some vape products as tobacco products. So now the tax is coming to the tobacco fund, not to the vape fund. So we've got about a four million dollar shortfall in the vape fund that we have to make up between January one and June thirty.
Is that four million statewide or?
Statewide, so that's four million statewide.
Thank you.
Um, really what it means is it'll be recovered between the end of the legislative session and June thirtieth. So I'm the chair of Elk, and we're gonna be working out a process so we don't have the problem that we had in June with the clawback of funding, adversely affecting small jurisdictions far more than, than the large. So for example, we lost nineteen point eight percent of our budget. Columbia County lost twenty-seven point nine percent of their budget.
And King lost?
And King lost two point three percent of theirs. So, um, we're gonna be working, uh, as a team on, from Elk, the executive leadership committee, to have a funding formula, and my goal is to have that done by January one. So whenever we have to make that decision, we can implement it without having to go through this whole process all over again and all the stress and, um, arguments that went along with it, so. And hopefully it's a more fair process to the small, uh, you know, and medium-sized rural counties than what this last one was. So.
Four million to the state, what do you think that is to Mason County?
Well, to Mason County, it depends on how we do the formula. I'm not hoping to have it be a smaller amount. It could be as little as twenty thousand, it could be as much as a hundred thousand, depending on how we, how we apportion it across the state. That was my goal in June as well, and we wound up taking a three hundred ninety-two thousand dollar hit. So, um, we're, I'm working to try to get ahead of that this time and keep our, uh, impacts down because it's, it's adversely affecting the smalls or rurals far more than the, the larger urban districts, which also have more opportunity to apply for things that we can't. We don't have the staffing to apply for, you know, big grants. They do, so. You know, that financial public health services money is very important, it's very critical to us. And my biggest point is to, if we have to cut funding, cut the stuff that has the brackets around it and leave the flexible funds for us. So as directors and administrators, we can move money around to the programs that we need, we know we need to support. And, and let's make those decisions, not make those decisions from some other committee.
I'm smiling because I'm gonna say something on top of that, you know, the presentation you gave, uh, last week on budget?
Mm-hmm.
When it came to, uh, some of the things that the commission had showed as needs and some of the things that you, you guys done, and how you had separated out as, uh, special funding? Think about that same way of thinking and look, but it could be done with what you have and, and understand our priorities may shift.
Right.
And what that looks like.
And, and I, I talked with Casey about it last week and then this week, because, and it's, I hadn't thought about it, but in that, that reserve is also the opioid settlement funds. I mean, there are a number of things that, you asked me the question, I gave you a wrong answer. Um, so I need to go back to.
What?
I need to go, go back to those funds and, and see what's actually already spoken for and what the remainder of that's going to be. So I'll get that for you.
Yeah, that's rule number one, before we spend anything else, let us know what's already been obligated. But, uh, I'm sure you understand my question?
Yeah.
So, uh, we haven't, we haven't officially said that's our priority, but every time we've come to a meeting, we've kind of said it is. And one of the things as a commission, as we start talking about budget, I was gonna plan on bringing that up later. We, as a commission, we decide this is our priority, then we expect staff to find a way and do exactly what you just said. Take the parameters off this stuff, you tell us what stuff is flexible and bring us options of how to move our priorities.
Yeah.
Please.
Yeah, and, and there are, there are rules around our flexible funding, you know what it can and can't be used for.
That's completely flexible.
Yeah. No, and actually the stuff that is completely flexible, there's about a hundred thousand, that typically goes to overhead. We use that to supplement vehicles and paper and all those other things.
But we're allowed administrative.
We're allowed, and that, Jimmy rolls over to our administrative side.
Give us right numbers.
Yeah.
I might kick you next time.
So, anyway, we, after I went back, I looked at that, I thought, I need to look at that some more, so. So, we'll, we'll get you some updates on that.
Okay, because I know that there's people interested in putting that money to work, so.
Yeah, so I'll get that put together and, um, we'll get it to Jen. So she can look at, you know, what, what funds went where, so. And that's the opioid fund. I would really like to take the opioid fund and really set it aside in its own, own fund.
I think it's the most.
Yeah, it's, and it's, right now we're at like one point five million, something like that, so. Uh, working with Travis and Kami, we'll get a, a meeting set up so we can set out what our priorities are for dispersing those funds. Because there's a, a number of entities that would like to touch those funds.
The guidelines.
The guidelines.
Who, who can use them.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, because there's some very specific language within, within that program. I mean, but it is broad. I mean, they, they made it very broad, but there's some, some specific stuff we have to make sure we touch.
It's broad, but it's not open ended.
Yeah, yeah, so. Okay, I think that's all I've got.
I think they're Dave and his group.
Yeah. Okay, super.
They're the skippy.
Yep, thank you.
All right, so good to see public works in the room.
Yes, Kami had us all keyed up and ready.
Yes.
So you're running fast, so that's good.
We're just adjusting to a different flow.
Okay, all right. Good flow.
Well, first up, Mike is not here, but he's requesting a hearing, two hearings. And this relates to converting the gravel roads this summer, Yates and Ellis. And based on those conversions, uh, we need to be posting speed limits. So, um, no longer qualifying for the primitive road. And, um, we're requesting to set the hearings and then establish speed limits.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think it's great.
I know, pretty exciting.
Yeah.
That, and I don't know if you've had a chance to drive by Shelton Springs, the, the path, the pedestrian path is paved.
Yeah.
We have a little section there that we're waiting to complete based on traffic patterns and all those good things and some trees being removed and, um, but it's being well utilized. It has been used, obviously, clear pathway and, um, been lots of action on it, even on the weekend, weekend action.
Boy, I brought that up at the EDC meeting and said, say thank you.
Great.
Looks great. I loved it.
Good, yeah. Great work as usual by the crew.
Yes. That was good.
Yeah. All right, next up is, um, our water and sewer utility rates. So laying out a schedule for next year's rates and then, uh, some adjustments for following year. And then for years three through five, some adjustment based on the CPIU with a not lower than three, not higher than five, and some adjustments to the tiers in the Veers Cove water system. And happy to answer any questions if you have any. Steffi's freshed up from vacation, but I know her mind is like a steel trap, ready to respond to any questions. Catching up with emails.
Yeah.
No questions, this is what we've discussed.
Yeah.
I'd still rather have the five percent, but in negotiations, I have no problem with sitting up there and voting for this with what we have negotiated and have happened, so. So we'll be standing by it.
Okay, great, thank you commissioners. Well, we are here to help with that and happy to respond to any questions that our customers may have. And I know that Stephanie and her team and Richard
Well, for the public.
frequently talk with folks.
Well, I hope they understand how far we have come compared to what the original request was. So the commission has really brought those rates down to stay within an, a, a ability to pay it. But we understand that some of the people are gonna be very upset, but if they didn't realize what the original ask was, we did exceptionally well.
Well, and this helps them also prepare because now they've got a four, a five-year forecast.
Yes.
They can, they can plan.
Yes.
For their increases where it doesn't come as a yearly shock.
Yeah.
So I appreciate that.
Yeah.
I'm sure they will too.
All right, and then next up commissioners, we, oh gosh, over a month ago, I believe, um, sent, uh, ILA to the city of Bremerton. And the city reviewed the ILA and sent back some comments, which you have in your packet here. And then based on the comments and a couple of other refinements and twiddles on our end, we made a couple of other suggestions to the, um, the document, and that is attached. And so today, and then we've got a clean copy, and then you can see all the trap changes. And so we simply wanted to discuss that with you and then, um, hear from commissioners about what next. Whether you'd like to send something back in this format or some modified format. And we'll take your direction and off we'll go.
You gonna go first?
Sure. Okay, so, uh, some of the stuff that the commission had done, some hard work included, and I'd still like to see back in there because it's things that protect this county, uh, if we're even go forward. Because I, I'm still gonna be bringing up another quarter here at the end. Uh, one of the things, aside from the trying to replace some of the, the things that were taken back out, I, oh, first of all, there's no E or F in my document.
Oh, did it switch right to, did the formatting go goofy?
Uh, I don't know, but it's a, uh, F is referred to and I go to look at.
Oh, if you look at the.
Oh, the upper F?
If you, if you look at the.
So this other F, okay.
The cleaner.
Yeah.
Okay.
The cleaner.
The cleaner, the clean version.
The next one is, is I needs to specify that those, the paying for the feasibility, uh, it's not just a financial, uh, valuation, but feasibility would come out of those funds, that it's not requiring us to spend the money. If we agree to something, this is saying that both parties agree to conduct a preliminary engineering financial, Mason County should not be paying for that. That should come out of those funds and it should specify that, the funds from the, the state. Other than that, we have to pay for it. If we say we're doing this with a move, we have to pay for it. And I don't think that's acceptable in any manner. Number two, and the most important, what exactly are we, are we selling that? We don't have it. We have one hundred and twenty-five thousand gallon capacity. And the more I've looked into it, that is our capacity. If we want to change it, it's not just a change of an application. It is an actual getting a new license, and a new license based on the ability to service that license. It is an actual getting a new license and a new license based on the ability to service that license. Of which we don't have the land, we don't have the ability, and we have to go back to the tribes. Because the tribes are what uh kept us at that limit, it wasn't just that we bought to that limit because that's what the tribes kept us at at the time. For the ability for reach the bay. So again, and I looked at some different numbers and I seen uh. Uh another email here recently that you had sent to somebody saying that we're currently eighty-four thousand gallons. It may have been just a moment on that, but you might remember that email. But even with that, that's before these new apartments that are being finished are gonna go on. That's before the new apartment complexes right there is going on. We're about out of capacity, you got the ninety-nine also uh for Overton properties. But you had a a pre-op for three hundred up on top of that hill, you have another apartment complex looking down below at a hundred and forty. You're putting all that stuff together, uh what do we even have left? We have three hundred seventy-five thousand capacity with the whole system. Are we literally talking about uh selling the rest of everything we have in order? Because if we do that out, how much of that is going to be our total capacity? Already, we're talking about selling something we don't own, which is the one twenty-five. And ecology made things pretty clear on how they feel about that, especially without going and taking care of the stuff first. But the one twenty-five, selling something we don't own, one sixty on top of that, what about our future? What about Belfair? What about the rest of the area that has been uh rezoned up on top of that hill? If you start looking at three hundred units on top of Romance, uh one hundred units with David Overton, a hundred and forty uh new apartment complex. Uh and however many we're looking at just right now that have just been being finished, which I don't know what that is, is that another forty, is that fifty, I don't know. We're way beyond having something to sell to somebody else. So again, at what point do we just admit that this is a million gallon system?
Oh, it's not million gallon basis.
And I appreciate you, you actually educated me on that, I wanna give you props on that. You went through and you did it and I see you guys had that in in here, that's a big change to go from a million gallons to three hundred seventy-five, of which we hit the eighty-five percentile. We're probably looking at three twenty-five, that's what we have for capacity, period. That's nothing in comparison to what we're already talking, if we're talking eighty-four plus another twenty for up above uh on the Overton. Then if if that's twenty, that's gonna be an additional sixty for for the the three hundred on top and then another. Forty for those apartments and and the other apartments.
Yeah, you've hit it right on the head, which is exactly why we've identified the need to update the general sewer plan. Do a facility plan, because regardless of where the growth occurs, we need to plan for expansion. Totally, have to do that, no doubt about it, and there's a process. So that process goes through the Department of Ecology. It is available for all of the SEPA reviews, so we'll have review and comment by all of the interested and affected parties. Um we go through that process, and it's those are steps that need to happen when we reach the point that we're at right now. Which Richard and Steph and her team do a great job in counting what building permits have already been issued. What type of capacity we're at, so we've we've been looking ahead and being proactive about that. So it's, we need to do it regardless, one way or the other. And it just comes right down to, do we want to also serve the city of Bremerton? Or do we only want to serve Mason County and the the um customers of Belfair? And if we go one way, we need to be on the hunt for additional funds to do our own plan. If we go with partnering with the city of Bremerton, there are funds available to pay for that design work. And yes, it comes with the string of, we're gonna also serve the the um the folks at Bremerton.
Okay, but the math is actually very simple, if we are at capacity network, talking about selling something we don't have right now, if we were to expand out to our full capacity. Uh just putting these together and then you add one sixty, there's nothing left for the rest of Belfair. That one sixty will eat up all the rest of what's left here. So that means anything we wanna do in Belfair is gone if we if we assign it out to somebody else. That's what I'm trying to say, it doesn't even make sense that we would even consider that. What about the community that died in order to build that system that we lost all those businesses? What about protecting the ones we have? Why would we, we still have, we have a rezon, we have a zone up there. That is a special zone, doesn't exist anywhere else in this county, or they can build just about anything up in that zone. I disagree that we should have ever created it, but it is there, now we have to do the best we can with that zone. If we do all this and we sell the one sixty, that puts us up at our number where we're in trouble. We have nothing left to offer for those other properties. How much, the less, you you see a different math than I do.
Well, that's the point of the general sewer plan and the engineering report, you're designing for an expanded capacity.
Okay, the expanded capacity according to our our design is the three seventy-five, that's it, we have a hundred and twenty-five.
No.
No, I mean, it's expandable for sure. Uh that you can expand out, I mind the three seventy-five is without pouring concrete.
That's, yeah, that's.
For having to do anything like that.
We can always build another system, of course, and actually, I'm talking about our system.
The hardest part's gonna be the residuals, what do you do with the water? That's that's our limiter.
The reclaim.
The reclaim water is like you got, no matter what, point one-two-five, that's where we're at, as for design capacity. The pond and the spray field, so.
And the capacity of of the facility, and what it is. We could, we could always say that we can do whatever we want to, we can always build a whole new system, but that's not realistic, what we're talking about here is what we have. The system we have with its build out was only designed for four hundred, but now we have redundancy, as was told to us by ecology. Which was put over the top of you, that's not you. Within their parameters, so now we have to, we have, our design that we currently have has to keep a piece of it open and not used. So that it can be there for redundancy, that's why this number has dropped down from four hundred down to the three seventy-five or 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 less if we start hitting the eighty-five percentile. So again, you know, I'm gonna keep on going on this, but it's literally. I don't know why we keep pushing something we don't even have, we should have had that discussion a long time ago that we are limited to the one twenty-five, that's what we should be selling. But the idea that that we have this kind of limit, we're telling people we had a million gallons, I even thought we did one because of what I was being told. But when you read it and find out you don't, it's like, what the heck? But then on top of that, ecology made it really clear that hooking up industrial is not gonna be just that simple. They're gonna wanna be able to clarify everything that goes through that, what that looks like. So again, you're talking about things that are way outside the scope of our regular form of business. And in case you didn't catch, on the on the design of our system, which you and I discussed, our system is not designed for industrial. Our system is designed uh with UV uh which takes out, you know, bacteria and stuff like that and and a filter. And I know that one uh of our electeds, not here in this office, so one of us, was claiming that nobody has, they do have it. I double checked, uh Central Kitsap is where they ship theirs from Kitsap County, same thing in Tacoma, they have one, they have it in 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 Seattle. There is treatment, you still do at the location, but it still goes through a whole different treatment process where they use chemicals and stuff to weigh down the heavy metals and other things. We don't have any of that. Ours is a domestic system, as what it says in our permit. And why we keep trying to add things to it and say that it's capable is beyond me. I'm really confused and worried that that's what we keep doing when that that permit license was very clear.
Well, uh just for a technical look on things, the uh. The treatment plant, yeah, all most all treatment plants are designed for residential, organic str- household strength waste, most all of them. Um that would limit, if Bremerton was agreed to hook up, that that would limit what they could hook up. Because they'd have to follow under a a pre-treatment regulation to ensure that what they discharge to our system. Cause that's where it would be going, it would be able to do that. Um that could be cost prohibitive or could limit them to what they even have plans for, I don't know. But I mean, there there are ways that, I mean, that they could accommodate that. Just, just saying, that's all.
And that's one of the reasons why it was so important to have that in the actual agreement. Uh on those things, but that's one of the things that was stripped out as well. We need to have those things in the agreement, I don't even think we should be doing this anymore, I I did in the beginning for protect my community, we don't have anything to sell it. Eventually, I'd like to have our attorney also weigh in on that, because the idea, if we entered into a contract originally. With something we didn't have the ability to 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 supply, what kind of losses would we've been facing? And how did we get into a position where that could have been? And I'm not guessing on that one, because in passing with Tim, I did mention that and showed it to him and he's like, well, maybe we shouldn't put the brakes. Well, yes, we should, because of the risk, we have to look at those things, but I'm not speaking for Tim, eventually we need to bring this stuff to him, that was not this. That was just when I talked to him about about the license that we have and the limits that we have on the license, that's all that was. He was not in depth on any of this stuff, so I don't wanna speak for him. But I do know, as I've always been risk before, that is a heck of a risk, we should have had that conversation beginning, just like we should have had that conversation. Not in front of ecology, when ecology told us about the different weighting of the of the stuff and how you're prepared to answer that question. But we had never had that conversation once during our stuff on on uh uh in our local agreement. That should have happened first, so. Again, I I I'm I'm more taken back just that there was so much that we didn't know. And now that I do know it, I'm really wondering how we got so far.
Randy, I would like to uh say, I agree with you completely, this system needs to be upgraded. That's a given, we know that, the growth that's going to be coming our way from uh the expansion. Where the uh what the Navy has said they're going to be dumping in as far as just raw dollars into the area. We're gonna see a lot of growth, so we need to be able to handle that, so we are going to have to expand well beyond the three seventy-five. That's again, another given. The way I look at it is, this agreement allows us to defer some of the costs that would otherwise be dumped on Mason County. Taxpayers, ratepayers and and have a bigger chunk of it picked up. Because in Bremerton's words, they're gonna pay fifty percent more for hookups than Mason County residents. So I'd rather have somebody else pick up a bigger chunk of the cost of something we know we're going to have to do. Am I understanding correctly that 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 three seventy-five, we're gonna reach that limit pretty quick, pretty quick. We're talking twenty years.
Point one-two-five is gonna be reached super quick. And that's that's the one you gotta figure out what to do with your.
What we're gonna do with that water, sure, I understand that, but those are those are things that. Whether we hook up with Bremerton or not, those are problems we gotta solve for our system. Absolutely gonna have to. Well, if we can, they're talking about uh this is gonna take them twenty years to get to that hundred and sixty gallons, a hundred and sixty thousand gallons per day. Well, I mean, if we're if we're getting a fifty percent out of. Out of service area fee for all of these things, that's certainly gonna help offset some of those expenses. To bring the system up to handle what we're going to need, plus the excess that ecology demands that we have. But I mean, am I understanding this correctly?
Well, what do you base on that you think we can expand that system? Above the 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 three hundred, actually three seventy, three and seventy-five is what you're saying, but three twenty-five is what we're looking at with with our precautions put in there. What do you base that on? Because I have never seen anything that says we can't.
That we can expand that?
Uh past that, yeah.
Richard just said we could, I mean, he said it before.
He has to go through ecology and and we're looking at a design of a new additions o- system. You know how hard it was to get the original one? You're not just gonna blink your eyes and do that, we're talking, you're talking about creating another system next to a system. You're not just gonna just keep working this one, this is limited on what it can do, you gotta start pouring concrete, you have to start doing, we haven't done any of that research. Not even one little bit of it, but we should.
Or have we? I'm looking at Richard, have we have we started that research or have we, is there a plan?
You'd be able, there's three solids holding tanks there that are convertible into membranes, so right now, you'd be able to. Right now, you'd be able to add additional membranes. So you'd have, you could bring it up to seven hundred fifty thousand gallons a day. But you'd have to pour concrete to do something with your solids. So you'd have to add a treatments, you'd have to move that treatment over, cause it's currently a uh aerated. Solid holding tanks, it's not really treatment, it's just kinda so it doesn't stick. That's all, until we can take it somewhere else, but that's, that's what you could do with the concrete you have in place there now. But that's it, that is it, but still, the biggest thing is, like you said, the the residuals.
Of which I read, I read that, we barely made it from what we did. So when you read it, they, the tribes and everything, they went through a whole process is what they decided for the one twenty-five, that's what they ended up with. It's not just a cut and dry thing that we wanna expand, we can't.
But I also heard ecology say that they were, they were willing to work with us, to get us to that point too. Because they they even talked about the 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 tanks that are now holding the solids. That's what I heard when I was, when they were talking to me, maybe they weren't telling you. That's what I heard when they were talking.
They were talking the whole time about getting us, well, we're safe with what we're using, within the one twenty-five, and if we were going to expand on that, then we have to go back to them. They weren't saying that they hate on our guts or something, but.
And they said that they were willing to work with us though, so so the door's not shut and uh. I'm not sure that. Well, I wanna make sure that we, that as we move forward, that we do it with. A lot of knowledge, how long would it take us to to come up with a sewer? You you talked about sewer plan, we don't have one.
It's mostly there, it just, it needs to be updated and this kinda stuff included.
And it needs to say, there is a potential to be serving not only. Belfair, but whatever it is.
To get to the three seventy-five, it has to say that? To to go above the one twenty-five that we have now, you keep trying to force us where we have to put that in the plan, why?
I'm not.
But the three seventy-five.
I'm hearing her forcing us to do anything, she's advising us.
I'm simply laying out options, if commissioners do at some point want to be able to serve Bremerton. Then we would need to include that in the general sewer plan. And you heard ecology say, it doesn't lock you in to say that you have to serve them. They were very clear that it just said, there is the potential to provide that service, but it does need to be in the plan. If ever you intend to do that.
If we are going to provide it, it would need to be in our comprehensive plan. But again, for this, the first thing we need to do is establish what we can use, we're almost at our one twenty-five for us. Uh of what we're what we're coming up on, we still have a whole bunch of Belfair that's still gonna need growth up there on the top of the hill. We're at our our capacity, pretty close to it right now, one oh six we trigger. To where we're supposed to start looking at at ways to reserve it and and conserve at one oh six. Right now at eighty-four, then look at the hundred and then, that was according to the plan. And if you say it's different, then show me, cause I can show you the plan where it said that. So if that's where we're at, then we need to start looking at the rest of the facility for us and what we're going to do and how we're gonna be able to hook people up to that. So a sewer plan should include that first and foremost, because this is the Mason County.
For sure.
Sewer plan.
Yes.
And right now, we need to look at those gallons, if it's, if you have that three hundred uh unit up on top of Romance, the one hundred unit. Uh that David just uh uh, did you say you got it? A hundred and forty year apartment, I don't, I'd like to know how many more these apartments that we just did uh are putting in since we did our numbers.
So was was the three hundred proof.
You can share that with me, so I could see what we're looking at for potential for gallons and stuff.
And the three hundred was approved above or by the town?
But we don't get, we don't wanna deny our people.
I'm not saying that we should.
Well, I'm putting words in my mouth, they they have a three hundred uh pre-op that already went out and went in. So I know that that's something we have to plan for. It went, they already did a pre-op.
They got that.
For three hundred, that means that we need to be planning for that, and we need to make sure we can handle that capacity. So. But I, again, I I think we should talk to our attorneys and see if we even have the capacity, if we should be doing something. But even if we do, I think it's important that we put back in some of that language of uh. being able to look at what gets built and what gets used, especially when it comes to ecology and stuff and what can even go into that system. But I think we need to protect the community too. Because the first thing that gets built up there is gonna be the easiest low hanging fruit and the stuff that doesn't trigger the the industrial. Because that's the one stuff they won't be able to get in. And to me, that's pretty clear. That's gonna be commercial.
It'll be not commercial. I think it's industrial.
It doesn't, it doesn't matter that it's industrial zone.
Yeah, it is industrial zone, but I think Commissioner Netherland is right that probably some of the first things that come in would be commercial and right around that roundabout, basically, the beginning of the freight court.
Commercial retails, easiest low hanging fruit is when they're gonna have to because they can pay a hundred thousand dollars for pipe to go like that. Millions that are gonna take the hundred million to build that other system. You've got an eighteen inch pipe that you're looking at a hundred and seventy-two ERUs per mile. If you're gonna allow for three day, that's just doing the simple math on on the gallons. If you allow for three day turnaround. I don't know how long it can stay in a pipe before it hardens up, but I figured three days is fairly safe.
Too long.
Is that still too long? Well, it's a hundred seventy. Well, in three days, it's a hundred and seventy-two ERUs uh per mile. And if you're looking at three miles of pipe, that's a lot of dry poop. But there's nothing there to hook it up to because you also only have eight ERUs currently. Uh, we got in trouble because we planned for, we, we weren't here. They planned for a ten percent growth. That never occurred. If we did that ten percent growth that never occurred and put it over to there, you're looking at twenty-six ERUs in a decade. But if you did uh ten percent, that'd be a little crazy because Bremerton itself showed a growth rate of one point four, one point five four percent. That's the reality of the growth rate. But we do the ten percent, we end up with this. Can we always get something else? Yeah, they could drop something right there on the highway because that's the easiest. But that's also the highest risk to Mason County and to welfare and our tax base. So again, we keep talking about all this stuff that we only have so much. And we're trying to sell something a hundred and sixty thousand gallons is literally, but we we will have to cut off welfare. If we obligate it, we obligate it. You can't obligate it and then and then use it, especially if we don't have a permit or something or license saying that we can grow and be bigger, that we could do more than the three hundred and seventy-five thousand gallons. We gotta get that stuff for, I'm gonna back up, before we do the one hundred and twenty-five thousand gallons. We gotta get that first.
So in our world, the obligation begins when the sewer availability is signed. So we can talk, we can visit about whether or not sewer is available. But when Richard signs a letter of sewer availability, that's what the developer then takes off and says, okay, I've got something here. You've got a commitment. Um, and sometimes those sewer availabilities are conditioned. And the condition may be you're doing X Y Z or we can provide you sewer service when we have a re- an expanded reclaimed water permit. It's something that helps them better understand what the the sidebars are around sewer service provision. Um, so just just to be clear, commissioners are always in the driver's seat that way. Same thing for the type of use. So if Richard were to receive an application for sewer availability for an industrial use, and again, this is whether it's in our industrial zoned area or someone else's industrial zoned area. He's carefully looking at what the permit requirements are, what are what our limitations are. Our code speaks to um what pre-treatment requirements are in existence for industrial. So again, you, we have the controls and brakes on what's allowed so that it we are assured that we're meeting our permit conditions with ecology.
Right, and our our pre-treatment stuff, it's it's pretty vanilla, you know what I mean? It's like for restaurants or laundromats, typical things you'd find in a community, not not really what you'd think is industrial. So anything that comes like that to me, um, I don't administer that program ecology does. So I direct the applicant to go to ecology and get their approval and give that. Then they can provide that. The ecology said we can do this under these conditions and then I condition their permit that way.
And of course, there's these far enough to have that in whatever agreement we we're going to do. When I talked to you on the phone, I asked you a question. I told you I'd be asking you a question. How many gallons are we going to need to service just that top? The top of the hill up there, just that top on the right side, not even the left, not even the anything else, or the five hundred units that come down below it like this? There's five hundred units over there that are all in the Belfry UGA, by the way. Uh, how many are needed for the full buildup of just that small area?
How many gallons?
Yes. Or how many ER, how many ERUs even? Because then we can figure in the gallons. The EIS area that we just that we had just.
It's mostly in our general sewer plan that we did have done. I don't have that on top of it.
I I I had asked him, like, could you please get that number for us?
Sure.
Because that's how many, aside from anything we already have, that's what we have to have also. But then we still have across the street. Then we still have.
Romance Hill.
Yeah, then we still have the other five hundred units that we still have. But I think we're gonna find that our stuff is, we're talking about using something we don't have. We're not even close to having, but please get those numbers to us.
Sure, yeah.
Well, there's a lot of passion at this table, I can tell. But I also wanna make sure that that as we go through, our decisions aren't made emotional, but they're made logical. So moving forward, let's make sure that we've got all the numbers. And that'll help us make sure that we're making the best decision for Mason County as a whole. And I can already tell, I'm gonna have to sit down with you guys and and talk to him. He's got a engineering logical mind and he's got a a lot of historical knowledge and 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 passion. So I just wanna make sure that I'm understanding both sides. I understand the passion, absolutely.
But you wanna clarify for me, it's more than passion. I know the numbers and I have known the numbers from the beginning. I've been working this system and put together the original stuff that we did that pulled us out of the troubles. That citizen group was my numbers that I had put together. I understand the numbers. I understand them clear. And the more numbers I get, the more I understand it. So it's not just the passion and it's not just the community. The numbers are the numbers and they don't add up.
Well, I believe that that's historical and that's what I was talking about. So maybe come back with us or back to us with some numbers and go from there. What do you think?
Well, I haven't quite heard anything that changes the what I consider to be a fact. We we're going to need to expand. We need more ability to handle reclaimed water. That's the first thing. What are we gonna do with that? Put everything else aside. That we've gotta solve that.
And I know that there are fantastic ways, new ways to to manage um the solids. I've been through some pretty pretty cold sewer plants. So I know that there's ways to to mitigate and to make sure that things are done correctly. And gosh, some of these sewer plants are making money off of their solids. So that's an option as well.
Many years ago, we had an opportunity, but we lost that opportunity. Uh, Belford Water didn't wanna help it, so we lost that company. But there was uh opportunity at one point and then maybe in the future for somebody to be the purveyor
Right.
of our purple pipe. Uh, they were looking to take it across the highway and they were making conservation blocks and all this other stuff of which Belford Water is one of the highest waters in the state. And so to be able to use that stuff for that was beneficial and they thought there was some money that could have been involved there, but it never happened. And also, the person doing it, there were some personal issues there with people here. We gotta separate that stuff out. If it pays, it pays. But it's gotta pay.
Taking the person out of the picture is a little difficult for some, so. Part of life, but passes, passes, just move on and the best thing happens in Mason County. Okay.
Sweet.
Okay.
Anything else?
That was fun.
You guys were able to get to Larson?
To.
Larson Road?
Um, we did, but not with hot mix, no.
But I don't care, as long as it's not bottoming out people, right?
Yeah.
We we're all capable of driving on on rocks. We used to forever.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
It's still not the ideal solution for folks, but um but yes, we did get out there right away.
I thought that was just being able to keep safe.
Yep. Yeah. Then last thing I had commissioners um on the twenty-eighth is National First Responders Day. And if it's all right during the um electeds and directors portion of the meeting, if I could just say a real quick piece that um public works are
First responders.
Definitely first responders as well. And we kinda quietly go about our business, but um we're we're an important part of that team also.
More than just a part. People just don't see it because you go out there and you hit that road, you don't know the the tree you didn't hit because they already cleared it off. You don't know all the other stuff that they've done before you ever got there.
I always know.
Yeah.
Fixing problems.
Responding to sewer outages, power outages. Um, working double, triple time.
Nobody likes the sewer waste either, remember? I was out there with you at four o'clock in the morning, walking through the stuff.
All those good things.
Well, my daughter.
Yeah.
Yeah, my daughter goes there too, yeah.
Yeah, she needs us.
Yep.
I have no problem. I think it's great.
All right, anything else?
Um, oh, the railroad track on coal.
Yes.
Check that out and see if the it's.
Have we not been out there yet?
No.
Okay, um, that is on the the um work list that.
How many have you been on next year at all?
Um, uh, so far, it's still on our list. Yeah, I know that Mike.
Even though the weather's getting colder and.
Yeah, Mike and team have been in contact with the rail master and have talked about different um solutions there. And I believe we're gonna do our best to get something done this year. But it is definitely on the list.
Okay.
Yes.
Most of us know how to dodge the biggest holes.
Yeah. But still, it's it's um a recurring. I think they've got a more permanent solution.
Oh, good.
Figured out this going down, so.
Yeah, cause um that doesn't appear to have any problems or very few problems.
Yeah, it it has an issue. I know that the the rail folks have concern about that location as well, that it's not nearly what it is on coal for sure.
Cool.
All right.
All right.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Your mayor.
Thank you. Super excited about sewer rights.
Yes.
We are also. Yay. Thank you, guys.
What was the term you used, Steve? You used a term, what was it? Uh indentured sewer sewer tube.
Entertained sewer tube. The only way to get out for a murder is to die or sell.
We are, do we wanna, we're not quite at eleven ten yet. Do we wanna take something right now?
She's got really quick, gonna take hers.
Absolutely.
Give us the most passionate conversation that just occurred.
Well, we hope it's a quick one.
We hope it's a quick one.
Nevermind.
Um, so we have a candidate for the wastewater treatment manager position. Um, the the incumbent that was currently in a position left in July. Um, we have identified a gentleman by the name of Ralph Aplia, Aplia? I'm probably butchering his name. However, he's got some extensive experience with the uh city of Arlington, city of Everett, Alder Water and Wastewood District, twenty-five years in municipal and municipal and environmental work. Um, so we've made a contingent offer to him on the eighteenth of last month. Uh, we're currently in contract or salary negotiations with him and he's requested a relocation package. He's gonna be coming from Marysville relocating to Mason County. So based on his certifications, his qualifications, the extensive experience he's got in the industry, he's he's a one of those rare finds that that are very difficult for us to to capture. But he is interested in moving to this area, which is uh why he's attracted to the position. So we'd like to do everything we can to get him. Um, so we're asking for the relocate relocation package maximum of five thousand dollars.
Well, we've got that policy in there for a reason, so I support it, commissioners.
Yep, you gotta get good people.
It's the first time we've used it. So I'm not, I'm not as up on that.
I feel like we used it for several years.
Not to us.
Well, I know we've got the policies. Yeah, the policies there requires your approval. Um, in this situation, you're looking at the the adjustment for moving the domicile up from the high end above Seattle area to Mason County, just getting the closing things out there and opening things up here in Mason County. Um, and then the move itself. Um, hoping that will get, take off that extra expense to get in here. All right, um, permission to move this to tomorrow's agenda for adoption?
Oh, Kami.
Yes.
Gonna move this to the.
Easy enough.
Perfect. Travis, you still have time for?
I bet you we could bust out three more before ten after.
Let's do it.
All right, so um I have got three that I think are easy ones. One, uh, we've got the agreement for the Pacific Mountain uh workforce region, Workforce Investment Act implementation. Um, it's in your packet. It's basically our homeland security region. All the commissioners are re-signing it. It's not an obligation for different funding or anything else. It's just to meet some of the obligations of some federal grants and so um, just hoping to move that to um, the action agenda, so you all can sign that.
I would recommend that we do that. Commissioners?
Just be thorough.
Okay.
Okay, good to go on that one?
Okay.
Um, let's see, what's the next one? Uh, we've got one here. It says letter of support for Beacon Point. That's actually a letter of support for Mason County P D one uh for their Beacon Point project. So there's two of those in there. There's one for the Beacon Point project and then the other one was for
Georgetown.
Georgetown Creek, yes. And so that's just a request from P D for the commission to sign letters of support. Okay? All right, good. And then I've got.
Does that need to be moved to the agenda for tomorrow? How soon do they need it?
Uh, I don't know. I didn't see that there was an expedited timeline on that.
Yeah, you've got all three commissioners on here, so it needs to go to the agenda unless it had your name.
I know, I was just wondering if it needed to be tomorrow or if it could be two weeks.
And since we're already amending the agenda, I'm sure that Kami would not be opposed to it, maybe again.
Yeah.
Would you want him on?
Yeah, why don't we do that? I mean, you already have to amend it anyways, so. Okay, so that ticks those ones off. I do have one more um that I just wanna bring up, but it's not in the packet and it's just a reminder that tomorrow is our employee appreciation for the employees in Mason County, where we recognize employees for their years of service with Mason County. Looks like we have twenty-three employees that are being recognized tomorrow. Everywhere from the newbies at ten years, all the way up to one employee who is gonna be recognized for forty years of service with Mason County. So uh, that'll be after the regular meeting. So hope all the um electeds and directors and anyone else who's representing those employees can be here for that.
Commissioner, I heard the new guy would love to do.
Good names?
Yeah.
Oh.
No, I met him. I met our commissioner. We had to. You you did too. We put you on that spot.
Yeah, you did. I remember that well.
Yeah, me too. When I got here.
He's like, oh, how do you pronounce that name?
Yeah, that'd be funny.
So there you go, three briefing items plus an extra by ten after.
What?
So I think if we uh take that quick break until twenty after, we can jump into the Mason Lake discussion and then that'll be.
So the Mason Lake is scheduled for twelve, wasn't it?
No.
That's why the people were coming?
Nope.
Nope.
Support services eleven twenty, twelve o'clock, Department of Revenue, oh, okay, that's different.
Yep.
Good deal, Department of Revenue.
Okay.
Cool. All right, so we will take a break until eleven twenty.
Okay.
There you go.
Yep.
There you go. Alright, thank you, and we're back. What do you got, Boris?
And we're back, okay. Uh, the next thing that I wanted to talk about was, um, have a discussion with the commission around the Mason County campground project. As you all know, this is the property that's owned by Green Diamond Resources and the potential of Mason County picking up that property to be used as a park for the citizens of Mason County. Um, a long-term study has been done by Barry Dunn, a company that does consulting and research on these types of projects, and um, we shared all that with you recently. Commissioner, how many pages was it? I think you recited it.
The appendix was five hundred and seventy-one, and the summary was thirty-seven. But there's a lot of other things we did about it as well.
Many hundreds and hundreds of pages and uh, months and months of research went into um, what they provided us, and so what I really wanted to do is kinda uh, give a overview both for you and the public of what Barry Dunn came back with as far as um, the potential revenue and income, um, some of the challenges that we would face if we were to take over that property. And then, um, we also have um, former Commissioner Schute, now E D C chair here to uh, back me up if there's anything on some of the stuff that he's been researching a lot with uh, him and Diane, and then we also have a representative uh, from uh, Barry Dunn up there in case you have any questions on the particular report itself. And so, I think what I'll do is just jump into um, some of the potential forecast scenarios as far as um, revenue and income that was provided by Barry Dunn. Um, the, on the, on the low end, Barry Dunn did a very conservative approach to looking at what um, potential revenue and expenditures and income could be expected from the park. Uh, I would look at, um, their, their first report gave a potential revenue of about three hundred and seventy thousand dollars with uh, three hundred and sixty thousand dollars in expenditures, which leaves just about twelve thousand dollars of income, which is uh, um, not much margin for error there, you might say. Um, they also did a more enhanced um, look at it, which I think they would probably describe as a much more reasonable expectation of probably how the park would perform. In which they said it was probably a, a four hundred and ten to four hundred and eighty thousand dollars when it came to revenue. And income at the end would be somewhere in the forty to seventy thousand dollar range. Um, they also had another, another more market-driven approach done by Integrity, which I believe they contracted with. Um, they had a, a rosier picture of what it looked like, potentially six hundred and sixty thousand dollars or so when it came to revenue and closer to a quarter million or a little above that as far as income would be concerned. So, those were the, the three sort of looks at what revenue and income would look like if uh, Mason County was to take over the park. Um, those numbers were for um, twenty twenty-six or twenty twenty-six going out to about twenty thirty is the, how they looked at those. I would also say that the variability in how those forecasts look has a lot to do with what you're anticipating you're going to do with the park. And so, the very conservative approach that uh, was the first one that I gave you is based on only a sixty percent occupancy rate. It's for a more limited number of days that you would run the, the overnight camping and some of those things. I think the more aggressive, market-driven approach uh, anticipated that Mason County would make some changes that would allow you to use the park in uh, much broader uh, much broader range and for a longer period of days during the year. Um, perhaps having some camping cabins, perhaps having some sort of events, uh, events facility that can be rented out at different times of year, some of those types of things, so. Um, that's kind of the difference that you'll see in those approaches as far as that's concerned. Um, there's no doubt that there would be some challenges that we would have to face if we wanted to take over the park. Um, I gave you some information on the ADA requirements. Um, it came in at about three hundred and seventy thousand dollars in ADA requirements that would be required. Um, not all of that would be required upfront, I believe. It was in the range of about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars, a hundred and seventy-five, a hundred and eighty thousand dollars that would be would be required upfront in order to make it ADA compliant enough that we could open the facility to the public with then the, the remainder of those, those updates needing to come in a reasonable amount of time after, after we opened. Um, I also provided you a list of just some of the work that um, Barry Dunn described as being um, required improvements that we would need to make before that we could open the park. Um, a lot of it had to do with um, just the parking lots and the stormwater. It identified some of the ADA things. Um, um, looking at the swimming area and deciding if we wanted to have lifeguard stations and lifeguards, those kind of things. Um, picnics, trails, campsites, signage, just some of the stuff that would be required for a, for a public facility. And so, um, that is a seven-minute synopsis of many hundreds and hundreds of pages of Barry Dunn material that I want to throw out there. I would also um, stress that we've had um, a number of meetings with Green Diamond to talk to them about the property. They seem very invested in having it remain a public park and available to the citizens of Mason County if at all they can make that happen. Um, we have not discussed an actual price that they um, would like to get for the property or how that would be structured. It's, this is more of a conversation around, does Mason County want to run a park, a twenty-four hour campground, and is that the direction that we want to go? And if that's the direction that we want to go, then I think Green Diamond is ready to have more conversations about uh, about how that looks to them and how we can structure that for the future. And uh, I would also say that um, as far as on the financing side, on how we could do that, um, definitely um, Kevin and Diane have done a whole lot of work. They set up a meeting with the R C O so that we could talk about grants into the future, um, set up, uh, Kevin facilitated a meeting with the Y M C A, and I know that Diane's been doing a lot of work on county financing and and what options would be available to us, so they would be a resource moving forward if we had those discussions. And so, um, I think if you had any questions about that or any questions about the report for Barry Dunn, since we have one of the representatives here, now would be a fantastic time to do that. And I'll stop talking.
Okay, well, Paul, normally we, we don't do this, but Kevin, do you have anything that, that you want to add? You want to come up to the table and that way?
Oh, sure.
That way we could, that, nobody, everybody can hear you, hear your voice.
Everybody really wants to say yes.
Uh, first off, I think Travis did a really nice job at summarizing everything that was kind of the highlights of the report Barry Dunn completed. Um, I think just the, uh, the one thing through this process for us has just been the recognition of how unique and opportunity this is for the community. Um, you know, there's, there's been generations of Mason County residents who have you know, spent a large part of their recreation time at Mason Lake, and so, um, you know, when we look at kind of the future of this, you know, the, the role that the county has, um, and the opportunity that the county has to play here um, is pretty important. Um, and so at the E D C, we've been looking at this from um, you know, just the perspective of how we can support uh, you know, a potential acquisition and, um, you know, some of the things that the county might, you know, be interested in in terms of helping um, do that, and so, the R C O funding is a, a great opportunity. R C O was super impressed by the site when they came out to visit. Um, you know, and there's, you know, I think the nice thing about R C O is once you get funding from them for these types of things, they stick with you through the entire acquisition and improvement process, and so, um, what was indicated to us at the, at the site visit this summer was uh, we don't see many opportunities like this anymore, especially in Western Washington. Um, if you want to move forward with this, we'll be, we'll be a partner with you for a decade on, on a project like this. Um, just because of how, how unique it is to have fresh water access with that kind of a, you know, territorial view and everything, so. Um, it would be a real, I think, shame if we weren't able to figure out how to do an acquisition, and I think Green Diamond is um, very interested in working with the county on figuring out that part of it as well, so. Um, R C O has a, um, one of the things that they offer is it's called a waiver of retroactivity, so they have their grant, you know, requirements and things like that. There are limits on what they can grant out in any one cycle. Um, but you can, you can apply over multiple cycles and re, you know, apply that back to what your, your purchase cost was, so. Um, there's the ability to do the acquisition over time with their money. I think it's like a four-year period maybe on that where you're able to, to put back, you know, towards the acquisition. And that, that doesn't preclude you from any of the improvement funding that's available as well, so you could you can come back and say, we want to do, you know, five hundred thousand dollars worth of ADA improvements, or we wanna, you know, we want to put those lifeguard stations in or whatever, um, and so you can, it's kind of a both-and proposition from R C O, so. I think that'd be a really good partner for the county on that, in addition to some of the uh, you know, other funding that might be available that Tennesse had been working on and, and things like that, so. Just a really unique opportunity, can't reinforce that enough. We want to see the county make the acquisition and figure it out, and we want to be a partner in that and help you, help you along.
Alright, and commissioners, who wants to go first?
I haven't got, hold on, say, I haven't gone through the eight hundred pages of the report, but I mean, just in general, without knowing what the costs are, I'd love to see us you know, be able to bring this into the fold, I mean. Uh, you know, we've used it a number of times. It's a, it's a great facility. So, uh, it's a, a unique opportunity, as you said, hopefully it's forever, right? It's a chance that'll never come around again. Um, if we are to do this, the, the benefits are huge in other areas than what we went out and did work to find out, uh, the benefits from. One benefit uh, is once you get something established, you could also use it in other parks and, and uh, get an economy of scale of who you do it. We could also lease out the management of it and stuff, of which I would think would be the only way to do it for us, because we shouldn't maybe take that on the, the other way. But the other, some of the other parks we have, just an example is Mason Lake. We have better ones than this, but Mason Lake, you have a huge parking area up there. If you had just one string of areas where they can camp overnight, that'd bring in much more revenue, especially if you have a contractor that is taking in the revenue and handling all that, while we have maybe expanded duties for park rental, or park hosts. How great would it be? It depends on how much work we expect of them or how much we put into it, but simple camping is something we can't even do. You remember probably, because I don't know if Commissioner was here or not, we came close to getting back, I think it was Robbins Lake.
Hmm.
Do you remember all that? I understand, I got a phone call, I understand they're looking to, to sell it again.
Hmm.
And if that's the case, there's a huge area up there that's on a lake, that if we ended up with it, it used to be the Boys Scout Camp, would be perfect for this too. Not by itself. By itself, I don't know if I would want to take it on. But when you have something like this and something like that, and then you start adding the others, I think the revenue increases exponentially. Especially, I'm a firm believer in places like that, where they're doing and looking at the numbers, they're looking at the highest that they can get, which is, this is one location where I think you could charge a premium above premium. Also, premium above premium for weddings and other events, uh, since because of the facilities that they already have there, even if we didn't do anything else, but use some that they have like the house and stuff like that. Uh, with that being said, I see it as a huge economic opportunity, even though there are risks. At some point, when you start bringing in the other ones, I don't know how you can profit well. I also would love to see us do it where we have the off-season, where we have a very special rate for anybody that lives in Mason County. I know there's more to it, but if you're contracted out, that's stuff that can be done, or even during the regular season, some special stuff for certain percentage. If you live in Mason County, you can get the company, but to charge the highest that you could possibly get, and then still fill out. I truly believe that, so. With all that being said, I'm a supporter of it. Uh, the question is, does it pencil on the backend when it comes to purchasing? And that's something we have to find out uh, after we get going. Um, but I'm definitely interested in moving to the next phase and seeing if we can establish what that is, and then establishing how we can work with R C O and other entities like the state to get some of the funding to do it, or to work with them uh, for a loan, uh, internal with them, is, because I know there's stuff that they they've opened a lot of different things, because I truly believe they want to keep it here too, as, as a park, not I think they'd like to keep their legacy.
Done?
Plus Diane said to do it, so that's usually.
Okay, so that's a real reason.
That could have actually, that could have been the feasibility study in a nutshell. Diane said it's good, so.
She, she hated anytime anybody would mention camping. That was, just get ready to get something thrown at you later, so when she's in front of it, it's really.
Maybe it's because she's retired.
Yeah.
That's what it is, yeah. Yeah, well, I want, I want to thank um, Barry Dunn, Tom, your, your folks for really putting in a lot of work on this um, multitudes, stacks, papers, rings of um, information that was provided to us. You guys did a great job. Appreciate that. Um, do you, do you want to say anything before I continue to talk?
Sure, I, I would just like to thank uh, the county for giving us this opportunity. Um, Travis was great, uh, Christopher was wonderful, everybody we worked with, the people at Green Diamond were great. Um, we did think it, as you do think, it's a unique opportunity. Um, the way the scope of work was set up, we were supposed to check several times to make sure it was a good idea and we should move forward. And then every time we hit one of those checkpoints, it seemed like this is really I started to use the pun, but a diamond in the rough. I mean, it's a, a great opportunity now. I know you have to figure out how you're gonna pay for it, but we do think it's very unique, and um, I would just finish with, as you look to move forward, if you've got any questions, even after our contract ends, please just reach out to us. We look at our clients as clients for life, and you know, if you need something or have a question of how we did something, we'll definitely jump back on it and help you out.
Alright, appreciate that, Tommy. Yeah, we're, we're looking forward to a long, well, at least I'm looking forward to a long relationship, and
Thank you.
And also want to thank your team, because you guys have put a lot of work into this as well. Appreciate all the hours that you guys have done.
For sure, absolutely.
And I think it's a great idea. I want it, and I, I, Mason County, like Tom said, not just Mason Lake, but Mason County is really a diamond. And, and people don't know what we have, because in my opinion, we have been um, promoting it as much as we could. Um, our parks, all three of us went out there and we've got some pretty darn amazing parks, and they're being, in my opinion, un, underutilized. So, I would love for us to move forward on this. I, I would hate I was baptized in the lake. I know people have also gone out there and family reunions. It's such a staple, it's such a, it's grounded in Mason County, so I would, I would hate to see it go away. So if we can work on funding options, and um, Diane even said that she would like to have weddings and stuff out there, so Diane's committed, you tell her.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. So, commissioners, it sounds like all three of us are.
I'll add one other little benefit. Uh, I met with the Mason Lake folks a couple of times over the years. For the most part, they're very, very supportive and hoping that we will. There are a few that are not. Uh, it turns out one of them wants to buy it though. So, understandable, uh, but for the most part, I still get phone calls asking what we're doing, uh, and whether we will be doing it, but they're pretty supportive. Because they see it as a way to also help protect their lake.
Mm-hmm.
Anything else for me, Commissioner?
No, I can say that. I love it out there, so if we can, if we can make this work, great.
Okay, well, that gives me some pretty clear guidance moving forward. We'll reach back out to Green Diamond, then uh, definitely be reaching out to Kevin and Diane, and some of our partners to keep looking away at this.
Perfect, yeah. Let me know what we can help.
Perfect, thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Give Diana a hug?
I will.
Okay.
And that moves us to the gin show.
The gin show. I love the gin show. You really make us use our brains. Not that we don't, anyway.
Well, I, my hope is that you won't have to.
Well, I, my hope is that you won't have to. No, um, okay. The first thing that I have for you is the, um, the fund balance, um, policy, which is known as the financial reserve and contingency policy. And so I just have a few, um, draft amendments to this policy. We did bring this up in audit committee, um, about a month or so ago. And basically the major things are just cleaning up some of the wording. Um, I, I plugged in, you know, shall instead of will in some of the, um, in some of the wording. And then, um, bulleting out, um, so the county's annual general fund budget shall be adopted in the positive with expenditures not exceeding revenues excluding beginning and ending fund balances unless one or more of the following conditions exist. And I wanted to, um, spell this out a little bit better because we know right now we are not, um, adopting the budget with revenues in the positive. We're using cash in our budget, so I wanted to, um, make sure that our policy aligns with what we're doing. So, um, the first three items are the same, um, they're, they're currently in the, in the policy. That one, um, the board can develop a plan to restore the shortfall to reserve balances within one calendar year. Two, the offset of expenditures over revenue is due to one-time expenditures. Three, the offset is due to conservative budgeting and the net revenue over expenditures for the previous calendar year is at least equal to the amount of the excess in expenditures over revenues in the current budget year. And I added four, the county's available cash balance exceeds established reserve targets in the general fund operating reserves. So, um, so that is true, we are doing that and so that's why I added that bullet number four.
I, I'm not in there, if that's not added, that's how we've done it though, anyway, why would we add this? Now, I myself do not think we should be doing a budget that's expended more money than we're taking in. And if we do, I think it should hurt, we should have a full conversation about it and make it an actual action to the board. So why are we, why is, what is your reason for adding that?
My, my reasoning for adding that is number one, and I can add this into the policy too, if you're in agreement, but this is a, a GFOA best practice, is that our reserve target should be, um, two months of, of our expenditures. And so that equals sixteen point six seven percent of, um, of our, you know, expenditures. So right now, we, our policy says fifteen to twenty-five percent for, um, operating reserves. So that's why I added that.
Yeah, but that was done on purpose by the commission, we wanted to put in that way, why didn't we go backwards?
I don't, yeah, we're not going backwards.
Well, if you're going back to two months instead of doing what we said, that is going backwards, that's changing our reserve policy.
We're, we're not going backwards. This is just to clarify wording as to why we can adopt the budget with, with revenues less than our expenditures. So that we're not on the hook with the state auditor when they come in and say, well, you know, you have all these reserves, you're not hitting them all, um, this allows us to adopt with our revenues less than our expenditures, so long as we're hitting that, that reserve.
Okay, but we've been doing that already, we're not violating the law.
No, it's not a violation of the law, but it, it would be a violation of policy if we're dipping below our reserves. Um, I, I just wanna.
That's why we don't dip below our reserves. So we go ahead and go forward, but just know that that's what I have the issue on it. We have a reserve, we set up a reserve policy and we set it up in a way that we could do all that. I don't wanna make it easier, uh, unlike, uh, there's disagreement on, on how we think we budgeted the last few years at this table. In reading that email that was sent to me by Travis, I disagree. We have definitely not budgeted conservatively, we have budgeted more money, uh, out than we're taking in, without a doubt. We have gone backwards, the first, the first year when we started changing these things, went backwards, was one, one point four million. Maybe a little bit more than that. This year, we're gonna be three, uh, four. Uh, next year, because of the bow wave and how it works, that starts to be five to seven. And that's not budging with our means, it's the opposite, we're using up our money. And I don't wanna make it, I personally don't wanna make it easier to use up our money. That's for a reason, to protect us and to keep from having to raise taxes.
And I don't disagree that we are using more of our cash now. Last year was the first year, twenty twenty-four was the first year that we have used, um, more cash than we have brought in in the previous, I think, five or six years. And so now we need to come up with a plan. I don't disagree that we need to come up with a plan to, um, lower the amount of cash that is going out. But I wanna make sure that our reserve policy, that we're not violating it and we're doing it correctly. And so let's go through the rest of it and then come back.
And I'm disagreeing on that, just so you know. I just, I just see this as an opportunity to make it easier to take it out, of which I, I'm not a fan of, I'm the opposite because once it starts, once it goes out, don't come back. And as, as you start to build that bow wave, we lose control of it. I see unreserved cash still as unreserved. It's just, uh, not designated, but it's still a reserve that we're spending out of. That's why we spend out of it, other than that, then we're dipping into our designated reserves.
I mean, I think we need to be careful with having too much cash too, because we, we got to a point where we really did have too much cash and we need to be careful and cognizant, cognizant of that as a governmental agency, that we're, we're not, you know, hoarding the people's cash.
Yeah, and they were five, at five, six million dollars less than when they had that discussion to, to worry about it, not even the, and next year, that'd be ten million.
But that's why we created the reserves, was because we had, we had to create additional reserves. My memory is, we had to create additional reserves because we had too much cash.
No, we created additional reserves so people wouldn't know it was there so they could take it.
Because we had additional cash.
But we have plenty, uh, cash.
Because we had additional.
Yeah, the cash was not the issue. We did come to a point where they were worried, I know, cause I was part of that conversation, where they were worried and they were talking about it, but we did not exceed that amount. They just let us know that at some point it does become a problem. But now we're six million dollars less, at some point, we need to stop doing that.
And we would have exceeded that amount in the unreserved cash, the amount that's allowed by thirty-six forty, own I know, RCW. But we, we created that, um, fund balance reserve for capital, the five million or other amounts set by the board. And that is a very loose, um, reserve, I feel like, you know, um, it wasn't designated for any capital in particular. And that reserve is still in this policy, so, um, because.
I agree, I'd say, kinda, but I'm the same, but it.
So you wanna continue on or?
But there was, there was purpose for it too. You know, we talked about Joe, we talked about other things that may come up. It's just a wise move to have reserves in capital, cause we have capital expenditures. I don't wanna spend out of it, but you know, like the super stuff like that could come out of that if we ever needed it to be, if we were in a emergency, like if a college was to shut us down and say it has to be done, but it's nice to have it.
I agree, it is a really good reserve, which is why I am recommending we leave it in, in the policy. So moving on, so I added in, um, calendar year, um, just because there was some, uh, confusion as to which year we were looking at or, you know, the prior year's calendar year's expenditures is what we're looking at when we're reserving our, our funds, so I wanted to clarify that. And then the contingency fund, I, I updated the wording on that so that it was a little more clear that the million dollar contingency, um, was for, uh, the event of unexpected economic downturns, major unplanned expenditures or other fiscal emergencies. Um, I felt the other wording was a little bit, um, confusing. Um, I took out the technology replacement reserves and I put a note in here, um, as to why. And that is, the technology, we already have an IT fund and we are, we have a reserve within that IT fund. It's not, um, it's not spelled out as a reserve in, um, in this policy and we can do that. Um, this was part of the general fund, the, the technology replacement reserve. So, um, I, I don't think we need it in this policy because we already have those expenditures budgeted for in the current year that we're going to replace. So I don't see a need to reserve more fun. If we're replacing roughly the same amount of computers or other techni, technology equipment each year, there's no need to, um, reserve those funds and budget them again.
Until we're not, I've been here for so long, that isn't how it works sometimes. You've been around long enough, you know, there's times where we have fallen way behind on, on IT and stuff that has happened and we've had to make those investments and we've taken it out of the general fund to do it. That's one of the reasons why that is there. The IT fund itself is to pay money in, money out, but this is to handle those situations when it does come up, something big or something happens and we need to replace a bunch of computers at one time or other things that may happen, such as the IT in this room and the different things that we've had to look at for IT for, uh, off-site. Uh, there's been a lot of different things we've looked at, so again, I don't, why would you wanna remove, where's the, what is it hurting for being there?
Because this is just the general fund, we have our IT fund that services the entire county. So if we want to include, um, an IT reserve, I think we should do it in the IT fund. So we can include an IT reserve for this policy for IT.
I think it's cleaner and, and more transparent that way too.
A million would, would still be there, it'd just be under that line instead of the general fund?
It wasn't a million, ever. It was, I had put it at four hundred thousand, just because I had went through the budget and went, okay, we have about four hundred thousand countywide budgeted.
We said a million. Yes, I remember, I was part of that.
That was part of the vehicle replacement.
We also did a million for them as well, we did a million for IT, we did a million for vehicles at the time, and we were talking about it as a commission. Yeah, I'll go back and I'll, I'll find it, cause I, I know we had the, the conversation, without a doubt, we had that conversation, that's why we set it apart. And we had the, the, the reason why was some things we talked about, we had just had a big thing with, uh, off-site and we had to do some investments, it was smart to put our monies there so it wouldn't get taken anywhere else.
So let's just see the, the wording of it.
Okay, um, so, yeah, I don't remember a million, so yeah, if you can come up with something, that would be great.
Yeah, I don't remember a million.
Well, that was us, our discussion, so we, we said that, but we'll, we'll find out from the old videos.
And then the vehicle replacement reserves, um, we had set that at a million. And that is for, like, if we're totaling vehicles and need to replace them. So that we had had at a million, I'm recommending that we do a smaller amount because we al, already have those vehicles budgeted to expend in each year. And so if we, if we're replacing vehicles, yes, we need to have cash reserves to do that. A million just seems excessive, I mean, to me, we can keep it at a million if you wish, but it seems excessive. And that's my recommendation.
And that was, that was when we, that was before we did the, um, enterprise also, right?
Um, I think we, we had, yeah, set this policy, the original was, I think, in twenty nineteen, so yes, it would have been before.
We were setting this up based on the, the enterprise fund and so that we would have money if we, cause we didn't know if enterprise is gonna work. And we still don't know if it'll work tomorrow, because we're at their, their whim, it was only one company and they weren't gonna do it. They had told us no for years, we finally got them to say yes and it had never been done before. So what we wanted is to have money to be able to buy cars, and I still think we should have money to buy cars. Again, I don't, not sure why we're lowering reserves, I think we should keep reserves.
And that's fine, I mean, I, I'm okay with, with keeping it higher. I just, I just think it, you know, soon we're going to hit the point where we are lo, lower than our reserves and then we're going to be not in compliance with our own policies.
So that's the reason for doing it and that's what I'm saying, I disagree. We need to live within our, our policies. We don't need to, to change reserves so we can spend more money. I've been, I've been that from the be, well, if it's telling me that we're at the, the, we're at the verge of being, of dipping into reserves, you don't wanna dip in reserves, that means you're lowering it so we have more cash and less reserve, that's exactly what that is. And having the reserves is the right thing to do for a good, sound county. Every other county's in trouble, it's because we haven't done that. If we are off balance on our money, we need to cut the budget and do what we need to do.
A lot of those counties that are in trouble used our funds to, to.
Yeah.
To put people in, in positions and things like that, and we didn't do that. So you can't say that, that every other county is doing, that they're doing the same thing that we're doing, cause we didn't do it.
I didn't say that, but it, what I am saying is, is we're going backwards with our funds, cause we're spending more money than we're taking in. That is what's happening with us, that's what they did as well, whether they did it with our funds or whatever, they're going backwards. We have been smarter than that and we haven't done that to ourselves up to this point. But no matter what, we are expending that much, we are dipping into money, we're going down the same path they are unless we do something different. And here's the saddest part, we're looking at three to, to four million dollars now. Next year, cause of the bow wave, you got one and a half a year before, you got three to five, three, it's gonna be four million or so this year. Next year, you're gonna look at, at maybe, if we're lucky, six or seven. That eats it all up, now here's the saddest part about that. At that point, we're in these reserves and we're changing our reserve policy so we don't eat it, let's just say we have to make up three million. Okay, cause we've been there before, let's say we had to make up three million, not seven or six, just the three million to keep going for a couple more years. Every single body is, is what we're talking, is people, because eighty-some percent of all of our money comes out of that. Of our people, we're limited on what we can do, because there are other people such as planning this money in, money out. Road funding gotta help us, cause that, that stays with theirs. So if we look at a hundred, instead of a hundred and twenty-five per person, let's give them more, let's say a hundred and fifty per person. For three million, that's twenty people, I don't wanna lay people off because we keep spending out, above our skis. And I don't wanna start dropping the, the reserves so that we can spend more to go. We need to be smart about it, because that bow wave will overtake us. You were here when we laid people off, you weren't here, you were over there. It was a horrible, horrible thing and we only had to make up two million. Our bow wave is, is getting bigger and bigger each year. If we do three, that's twenty people and that's people, cause you're not gonna cut the water, you're, you're not gonna cut paper, you're not gonna cut, cause it just doesn't. When we went through it, there's very little you can cut above personnel.
So can we finish going through the policy first and then have more discussion on that?
Yeah, well, um, I will also give my points when I see them.
Okay.
Okay?
So, um, so the vehicle replacement reserve, we can leave it or, or change it, um, either way. The next thing that I want to add to this policy are the restricted, um, fund balance reserves within the general fund. And that includes, um, community development, which could be a, um, enterprise fund if we choose to make it so. I do, I would not recommend doing that in twenty twenty-six, um, just because of the amount of time it will take to set that up. We're already doing position control. So I feel that having this, uh, fund balance reserve in the policy, um, will kind of be a, a fix for now. Um, the historical preservation, um, department number one twenty-six, which was, um, a department, or I'm, I'm sorry, a fund, um, a special revenue fund. And, um, we chose to move that into the general fund. And so those, um, revenues or cash balances, um, really should be tracked moving, moving forward. Um, the sheriff jail commissary and the sheriff donations, those were also, um, a special, special revenue fund that we chose to move into the general fund. And so again, those, um, cash balances should really be tracked. So, um, I believe, oh, the, the other, um, other thing was the lodging tax fund, um, the lodging tax committee, um, has said that they would like to see a reserve fund in their, their budget. So that's why I added the lodging tax reserve. And then the utility fund, um, reserves for capital and then just the regular reserve. Those are already in the policy, but it didn't get referenced, um, when that got changed and put into the code. So I, um, included that in here and I need to reference the most current, um, resolution, which I believe is twenty twenty-four, who we know.
So I remember us doing, we didn't put it in the code, we did it?
We put it in the code, but, um, the resolution didn't reference this, um, the original, uh, resolution number twenty twenty-two oh five two.
And it should.
Yeah, it should, so, um, so we just need to add that into, um, you know, combine it in, into this, um, this new resolution, combine everything. I think Public Works had, uh, briefed it, they had taken it and briefed it, uh, separately, so it didn't get referenced. I think Public Works had uh briefed it, they had taken it and briefed it uh separately, so it didn't get uh referenced. The twenty twenty-two oh five two, uh, not a big deal, just needs to be cleaned up.
We did it over the blanket, is that what we did?
Um, it, yes.
I'm trying to think, we did it over the blanket, over the department.
Yes, it was a big code change for um for Public Works, for utilities, yes. So uh that's just a cleanup thing. Um, so I did send this policy out to um the audit committee and the finance committee. And I did get um some feedback that I wanted to address. So um, so from auditor Dunkel, um he had stated that um if we had a cumulative reserve fund, then it needed to go to vote, and I wanted to clarify that we do not have a cumulative reserve fund. Um, we have uh reserves within our cash balances, so it's completely separate and shouldn't go to vote, so I wanted to make sure that was clarified.
Do you have the definition for us that you'd share later on, what one is, because I didn't know one of those?
Yeah, I can do that, sure. Um, and then there was concern about um about the board having um, you know, about this going to the board without going to the financial polit- or without it originating in the finance or audit committee, and I I just wanted to clarify and state publicly that the board has um, you know, complete say in in the policy. It doesn't have to originate from the audit or finance committee, so I wanted to clarify that.
It doesn't have to, but we always have, because we, we were on the verge of being unaudible. We created that committee to do all those things, but from what you just said though, you said you did bring it to them.
Yeah, I brought it to the audit committee, but I don't have to.
That was the one time I missed, because I I never, for that?
Yeah, you were there. We had a big discussion about fund balance in that audit committee meeting. It, not all of these items.
I was gonna say, because we had a discussion of fund balance at the time, but not all that, okay. But yeah, we've always chose, by law, you don't have to, but we've chose to do, that's how we've kept out of trouble when we were in trouble for years. Again, nobody here, we had to clean up what had been done, because they were going on their own doing stuff. The audit committee was put together to keep us together and save us and get everybody working on the same page. So it always makes sense to share it with them, as we have with just about everything, because that's what we've been doing now for all these years that we put together.
So I guess what I'm looking for here is direction on um, you know, i- if we want to to keep some of this working. I mean, a lot of it's just cleanup and um, you know, I don't feel like should be uh a huge discussion. Uh, the other items that, you know, if there's disagreement on, we can, we can think about it and come back to it. I can brief this again um next week, if you want more time to um go over it. And I mean, this li- kind of leads us into the budget discussion and um, you know, we always talk about cuts, but I mean, is there something we can do to increase our revenue? Because we, we do run very lean in most of our departments, and I mean, so much of what we do is mandated. Almost everything we do is mandated, and so to cut um
And more mandates are coming to it.
Yeah, and again, that's your opinion, but as commissioners, you know, that's our job to look at that and and to see it, you know.
As commissioners, that's all three of us.
That's what I said.
Okay, so far, it's been a very one-sided conversation.
And I'll continue to have my opinion, because you know what? As I sit here the last two years and watch you overspend, this year I'm not going to be okaying with what we're doing. So yeah, I'm gonna continue to give, give my opinion, for you to say that.
Are you to say that I'm overspending?
In the last couple of years, we have, yes, and if, to be honest with you, I had hoped when we passed the last budget that somebody more conservative would come out and we would not spend on some of this stuff, and we didn't. On a couple of these things that that positions are required, we didn't spend, that saved us a lot of money. This year, I do not intend to pass or or support a budget that is way off of the mark. You guys can pass without me, but I do not intend to support it this year. If, if some of those things had continued to spend, this hole would be even bigger than we're in right now. And I do think it is all of our jobs to do that. Now, I can be voted down and I can lose, I get that, but this year, I need to see us, I'm gonna try my best from here, from there, and everywhere else to have us stay mostly within our our means. At least set it out so we can be okay for five years, that's how I've always looked at it, is five years. Uh, and just so you know, for almost all your stuff that you have here, I don't have issue with the majority of it. Uh, the changing of the reserve, but not the first one, the IT, putting it underneath IT, I have no problem with that, that actually makes good sense. Uh, I don't support uh dropping down the reserves uh in the car so that we can spend it somewhere else. I don't, I wouldn't wanna drop down the IT so we can spend it somewhere else. We're already running out of cash, we need to start staying within our means. Uh, as for the county's available uh balance exceeds, uh, if you think it's best to be in there in order to keep us safe, I'm supportive of that as well. That was the one I was, when I read it, that I wasn't sure what that was about, but if you think that will help us to keep from being in trouble, then that that makes sense. Yeah, it's, I have no history to go off of this, so.
Combined with the, with the uh transportation for the vehicle replacement, leaving that at a million, and I like all the rest of it too, so.
So Pat, you don't have any input um on any of this?
Give you a little more time to study this.
We have time for the sneeze.
And are all of you okay with moving the IT um, the IT reserve to IT?
Man.
Okay, well, I'll change that, and then I'll bring it back, I'll add in the, I'll change back the one million dollar vehicle reserve, and then I'll bring it back again.
I think we all disagreed to it just now, unless I heard something different, because that was the only issue I had, one of the sentence that was, is the million. And if she agrees that it can stay at that one million, I don't disagree with anything else that I, that I would vote against, that I saw in that.
Okay, and you're okay with with everything, and, okay, I just wanna make sure all of you have a chance to weigh in. And so, thank you for for that. Is there any, any other discussion on this um before we move into the budget um for twenty twenty-six? Okay, so with that, I mean, the revenues right now for twenty twenty-six, we, we do not have um one percent, the one percent property tax um increase. Do you want to look at including that in the twenty twenty-six budget? We have not taken um
Except the council manager one, or, because I know that there's two that that are available for us.
Um, yeah, that's just the um, the regular uh one percent that's allowed by by law, yeah.
I, I would rather not, of course.
That one I would rather not. I think the sales tax, yes, but the property tax, I, I have heartburn with that one as well.
Yeah, I'm not uh, I'm not in favor of raising any of the taxes. I know that, we find almost every single constituent I have would say we're taxed too damn much.
So we want to bank the one percent?
In both the road and the
Okay.
Is my preference?
Is that um, is that what you, you wanna do as well? Okay, and then um, the diversion right now is at one million eighty thousand. Um, do we want to look at increasing that to two million dollars from one million eighty?
I don't, because I think we're gonna need it next year. If we expand it out now, one of the things that happens when we have to look at cuts is the first thing that that looks to get cut, whether you, we like it or not, is the biggest portion, which is the sheriff's department. When it comes time to make the cuts, that's how we can keep from cutting them, is by offsetting. Uh, if we use it up and everything now, we'll spend it somewhere else. I'd rather hold off and use it when the time comes for making the adjustments for our budget, so that we can make sure to keep them all. That gives us a million eighty that we have to work with. That's what we had one time before, when we made the cuts in the past, we were able to keep more of the deputies and stuff going, because we had expended that. Now, as we got more cash in, we, we went backwards, back to the original one eighty. So I'm, I'd like to keep it just exactly where it is within our budget.
Can you bring this back to us after we've gone through the PLRs and the budget requests?
Yeah.
Actually, that makes more sense.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we'll just do a quick overview of the budget, I'll share my screen. Okay, so right now, um, the beginning fund balance is still estimated to be um twenty-four million. And again, I I think that it's going to come in somewhere between twenty-three and twenty-four million. So right now, it might be estimated slightly high. Um, total current expense, um, revenues are still estimated at forty-six million, six hundred thirty thousand, five hundred and fifty-six dollars. And uh total salaries are estimated at, for the general fund, thirty-eight million, two hundred thirty-one thousand, five hundred seventy-nine dollars. Uh, total operating expenditures are estimated at nineteen million, sixteen thousand, four hundred nineteen dollars. And because we are budgeting, budgeting conservatively, and what I mean by budgeting conservatively is that we are budgeting like we're going to expend all of our salaries and benefits and all of our operating expenditures.
And going light on our revenues.
Yes.
That's what we've historically done.
And so that leaves us with an ending fund balance of thirteen million, three hundred eighty-two thousand, five hundred fifty-eight dollars. Um, which again, I, I think that is a very, it will come in higher than that, probably about five million dollars higher than that.
Historically, uh, that is what happens. Although it looks really bad, and I don't wanna, I don't wanna downplay the importance of how bad this is, because there is a problem here. But, looking at thirteen, the reality is, it doesn't take up the whole amount that we budget, it's gonna take up probably five million, four, five, I I'd say five, actually. That's gonna put us, what, because you're, you're putting this at ten million backwards right now? So that's gonna put us closer to eighteen.
Right.
Real numbers.
The PLRs for the general fund at this time are two million, seven hundred fifty-seven thousand, one hundred forty-two dollars. Uh, last week, we had the assessors office um come and do their um budget requests, and there was three thousand dollars moved from the PLRs into um, into the maintenance level budget under operating. For the special funds?
Before you leave there, on the numbers we're looking at, a while back, when Mark was still here, we did, had you put something together that showed all the different employees and stuff like that? Do you remember putting that together to show the employees for the different departments, how many hires we had and stuff?
Yeah.
Okay, well, with that, there was a couple pieces that were left out, and I never got a chance to ask you, Mark was going to, but I don't know whenever it came of that. Uh, you did not include the parks director manager, and you did not include the IT director manager in that report. Are they included in this?
They are included, and they were included in that, yes.
Okay, well, I asked him, and he went over it too, and he said they're not there. That was Mark that told me that, uh, from the one that they gave us.
So, I had a ri- I had done that document um long before Mark was here, and so I don't know.
No, no, the, the one that we asked for, uh, it was shortly before he left.
Um, I mean, I update it every year.
You created a document, and once, and we looked at all the different positions, and there was nothing in there. And Mark looked at it, and there was nothing in there, he's gonna talk to you about to find out.
I'll send it to you, because yeah, those were included, and they are included in this budget.
Okay, so they are in there.
Yes.
Which is not a bad thing, I'm asking that, because if we decide to do something different, that's a half a million dollars. That's a lot, four hundred thousand and a half a million dollars is a lot of money.
Um, under the special funds, the beginning fund balances are are estimated at sixty-three million, six hundred thirty-eight thousand, three hundred ninety-four dollars. Total revenues, sixty-two million, three hundred ninety-seven thousand, nine hundred fifty-two dollars. And total uh beginning fund balance and revenues, one hundred twenty-six million, thirty-six thousand, three hundred and forty-six dollars. The uh total salaries and benefits are estimated in the special funds to be sixteen million, four hundred fifty-nine thousand, six hundred and ninety-eight dollars. Uh, total operating expenditures, fifty-one million, one hundred ninety-seven thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars. And total ending fund balances are estimated at fifty-eight million, three hundred seventy-nine thousand, one hundred twenty-eight dollars. And I wanna point out in the special funds that um, I mean, if you look at the ending fund balances there, they too, we budget it cons- budget conservatively, and um typically, you know, our cash balances are going up every year because we're not expending, um, you know, they're the full what we budget, and we are bringing in slightly more overall a lot of times, so um, so it's the same principle here, you know, our conservative budgeting has resulted in higher cash balances, not just in the general fund, but in other funds.
We've spent on the general fund, but we haven't been expending on these. And the million we just did, we actually took that out of the uh New Roads for Economic Development, the million that we gave the road fund to spend on that project.
Yeah, we did reduce their um, their beginning fund balance um by a million dollars this year in that, in the first budget amendment in June, yes. In this budget, we, we talked to health last week, and um we did move the hundred and thirty-five thousand dollar um grant into um into maintenance level, that was for um South Sound Shellfish, for one F to, to pay for one FTE and one vehicle. So at this time, I don't have um anything else new to go over for, for the budget. Um, we do have the auditor's office and the, and the sheriff's office here to talk about their PLR requests. First up is the auditor.
Can I just say something real quick?
Sure.
So, I did keep a copy of the FTE count that was sent out last year. And in Parks, uh, DEM, Parks manager went to point five in DEM and one FTE in DEM and added one FTE in Parks. So that was
Point five, point five in emergency management over to one FTE?
Point five to, point five in DEM to one FTE in DE- DEM and added one FTE in Parks.
Yeah, can you send that over to me, please, or, Travis, can you send it to me?
It's, it was sent out by Jen last year. So.
If you got a date, I can pull it up, too.
I can email it to all three of you.
Thank you, I don't worry.
Yeah, oh, updated again to, I'll send it out today after our meeting, um, but I'll update it again um with anything that's happened this year. Um, are there any other questions or anything else that you want me to follow up on or go over before next week? You've been awfully quiet, Pat, do you have anything that you wanna add or something?
Oh, the only one that uh jumped off the page at me was the hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars in overtime for our clerk's office. I thought that seemed a little excessive, to be budgeting more than ten percent overtime.
Well, I thought you covered that last week too, or, because that, I think we all disagreed that that's probably not how it should be done, because what we had done in the past, he wanted to use it to archive, and what we had done in the past is we did some contracting out, or we hired somebody for part-time to do it. And that's a lot, she's learned a lot more work than trying to get somebody to come in.
Or we don't wanna burn out our employees, you know?
Exactly.
Yeah, and we do have, and we talked about it last week, Kel, Kel talked about um the two employees, I think she's down to one now um for the archiving that she has going, and that ends at the end of twenty twenty-six, that position. And so maybe it would be a good um thing for them to pick up, for that person to pick up going to the clerk's office, yeah.
No, that'd be a smart move.
I mean, it would be different types of records, but um
Machines at the machines and
Yeah, so, just a possibility. There wouldn't be any offsetting revenue um for that, so.
But can you find out how much we pay? But can you find out how much we paid that one person for the part-time?
Sure.
It's not, it's not gonna be near that much.
Yeah. It was in the budget last year, so it should be easy to find.
And I did email you commissioners this morning, um, on the request that you had at last week's, um, briefing on the cash balances for, um, for the health department, so I wanted to make sure that you saw that. And then also, um, the PUD one, how much in ARPA we had given to them. And we gave them a little over one point five million for all of their projects, which is, um, over ten percent of our total ARPA funding, so.
But that was one point five for, for, for everything that they had, uh, um, Wi-Fi, they had.
They had, um, the PUD, PUD one customer, rearages twenty-five thousand, the Eggit Beach Water System Main Line, five hundred and fifty-nine thousand, the Viewcrest Storage Upgrade Phase One and Two, a hundred and fifty-eight thousand, two hundred and eighty-four dollars, and the Phase Three, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and then the Lake Arrowhead, Arrowhead Main Line, seventy-five thousand.
The one they asked for, for the O nine, which one was that?
They asked for that, for the Jar, Jarstead.
Are they, is that all that was?
No, it is not.
And that's who, who we just decided we'd send a letter of support for.
Yeah, but the other one, they're asking for a half a million?
Yeah, the five hundred thousand.
Yep.
The O nine? So we didn't give them anything for that project?
We did not, no. Okay, so that is all I have on the budget. Do we wanna move to the auditor now?
Well, I thought you were bringing them up.
No, we have it on the schedule for auditor first. On the agenda.
Bring that guy up here. I'm not saying they're more important, but they're more important. You start with the good stuff.
So, good morning, Madam Chair.
Morning, Commissioner.
So, um, that was presentation here. Thank you for your time this morning. Uh, this is the time to discuss a PLR in the special fund for the purchase of a new election system. So in March twenty-five, March twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-five, President Trump signed Executive Order fourteen-two forty-eight, preserving and protecting the integrity of American elections. Part of this executive order requires election systems to comply with the, what's called VDSG two point O, um, testing criteria from the Elections Assistance Commission. And these new requirements add new security features and integrity features which are, uh, marked and, I think, valuable and needed improvement to, uh, our election systems. So as auditor, I'm gonna be obviously in favor of this, and so in the budget for fiscal year twenty-twenty-six, I've earmarked two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and this is in Fund, uh, one O nine Machinery and Equipment Special Fund, not part of the general fund, not part of current expense. This is what this money's for. And, uh, so I'd like to move ahead with the procurement of a compliance system. I don't wanna be running elections in the future with a non-compliant system.
I thought this was voluntary. When I did my research on it, it was, it says it's voluntary. It's not mandatory that this is done.
Which part are you suggesting is ma, is voluntary?
I can't see. The Executive Order fourteen-two forty-one, guidelines for the VDSG two point O from the Elections Assistance Commission, that is a voluntary voting system guidance. So it's, that's a system from what I, from my research, it shows that it's voluntary and not.
So these are voluntary system guidelines for equipment manufacturers, not for auditors. So if you're gonna, if you're gonna deploy, uh, a new election system to the market, marketplace, these are the requirements that are set out through the Elections Assistance Commission for certification. So you can either choose to comply with them or not, but, um, the executive order is driving the expectation that future systems comply, and I don't wanna be non-compliant. The first system that's out there that does comply is the Hart Inter-Civic Ferry Vanguard one point O system. They're the only one out there right now. They received their certification on July seventh, twenty-twenty-five. Um, and they're slated to get certification by the Secretary of State on December first of this year, and at last check, with both the, uh, supplier and the Secretary of State, that's all on track. So right now, they're the only, only game in town, and again, this is what this money's for. It's not as if I can use it for other stuff or contribute to other, other programs. And within that, about the, the initial quote that I got from the vendor is roughly hundred and eighty thousand for the purchase of the system. They've got forty-four thousand a year for recurring annual license, maintenance, and support. Um, because I wanna be a first mover here in Washington State, I'm gonna be looking to leverage that. Makes us some advantage for a better deal from a supplier, and they've expressed a willingness to have discussions around those lines.
So the one O nine account right now has two hundred and forty-nine thousand, five hundred and two dollars, that's the, the expected beginning balance for twenty-six. So you're gonna use it all?
I'm sorry, say again, Commissioner?
So right now, for the, in Fund one O nine, election equipment, the beginning balance is two hundred and forty-nine thousand, five hundred and two dollars in the twenty-twenty-six maintenance level budget. So you're, you're wanting to use it all?
I don't have that spreadsheet for me.
That's your estimated beginning cash balance. And that was input in your, your budget?
Yep.
I got a couple of questions for you, Jennifer, but I, I just need, they asked one part on this, then I'll jump on you. A lot of, uh, these funds, where's the one O nine, where do you come from?
That comes from, um, it's a recording charge.
Okay, that's part of that.
And so I was just looking up like what, what those funds can be used for exactly. Um, 'cause I believe that those funds can be used for, um, like, document, um, you know, retainage, or, um, basically what the clerk is asking to do, um, I think is, is one of the allowable, um, expenses.
Are you talking about auditor's office recording funds?
Yes.
In what context?
Um, countywide. I believe that that is a, an allowable use.
Right, but these are, this is, uh, maintenance and equipment funds, a separate fund.
Right, yeah.
What is it, though?
Isn't that what Jill did?
Yes. Yeah, part of her salary, I think, was paid out of that fund. Um, but, but we weren't using it for, um, for that, um, for that fund. Uh, we were, we were using her salary, we were paying her partially out of that fund. Or maybe it was the auditor's O and M. I might have the two, um, confused.
I think it was the auditor's O and M. I, I remembered it, too. But still, on this here, can you send me the RCW on what defines it for, for usage, please?
For the elections equipment?
Yeah, and, uh.
She's sending it all through.
Yes.
And are there any competing?
Travis, so that he can.
So you kinda had, actually just accidentally asked my second question, which was, are there any competing requests for these funds? So you just kinda asked, I understand he hasn't made the request, but that it, that might be competitive, so I guess we'll look and see what the definition says first and how that works.
Okay.
I myself, you know, with that, instead of, if it's for equipment, it doesn't bother me to, to do any of this. It makes sense to be in front of things, but let's double-check the RCW, and let's double-check, uh, uh, the ability to use it. Put that be off the RCW. But if it comes in from, if the, one of the things we've always done in the past, too, when a department makes the money, we try to let them keep some of it, to spend it, but let's find out what this is exactly generates the funds.
Okay.
Elections, it's reimbursements from elections, feeds part of it.
And if that's what it is, I don't have any issue with that.
Yeah.
Let me just double-check it, you know, uh, measure twice, cut once.
Did you also wanna ask for, or talk about your other PLRs that you have?
No, I'm here just to talk about the election system, 'cause that's the one that's most important. You can ask questions about it, but I wasn't here to.
Okay.
I, I'm really here to have the discussion on the election system, so if there's any other comments or questions around that.
So there are other requests, um, an additional twelve hundred for travel, um, training and dues seventeen hundred, financial services for supply, request is increased, office supplies, pharmacy toner, fifty-three hundred for a new monitors printer. And then, let's see, elections for the extra help, that's, I have no problem with that at all. Fourteen hundred for overtime for the twenty-twenty-six election. And then.
Now, is that fourteen hundred above?
Equipment.
Is that fourteen hundred above or fourteen hundred for?
They've requested expense amounts, so I'm assuming that they're over and above.
Yeah, this is all over and above.
Why do you think it's gonna cost the extra this, twenty-twenty-six, over and above?
Should be a smaller election.
Or would you rather have, you have their staff member, we'll talk about that.
Um, I mean, I, I, I can come back and have that conversation. I was, I was really here just to focus on the election system today. I know that in talking to Marie, we, um, typically budget a certain level of overtime for staff around election time and part-time help. And that's what that is accounting for.
Last year was the biggest election, right, so far, 'cause that was the presidential. I remember looking at it, now I don't remember what it was.
I mean, last year, for their overtime, they just had a thousand dollars.
Budget, what did we spend?
Oh, and actually, no, I'm sorry, they had nothing in twenty-twenty-five, um, and they did not, um, they did not expend any, anything for.
Anything.
For twenty-twenty-five.
I'm looking at, um, I'm looking at licensing, sorry, my, my eyes are going bad.
I'll borrow my glasses.
Yeah, no, I'm okay. Um, so for elections, they had, um, eight thousand dollars, and they expended six thousand ninety-two, just on salaries, not including their benefits.
So I'm assuming that, that, that since this is a smaller election next year, that I don't see them going above, over, over and above what was cost out last year.
Yeah, but was that last year? Or was that twenty-twenty-four that you just mentioned?
That is twenty-twenty-four, so, uh, I know, when we're talking about last year, when we're talking about twenty-six, it gets some.
Sorry.
No, it's okay.
So what did they, what did we give them last year? 'Cause you're basing that above, um, last year's.
So for twenty-twenty-five, we gave them six hundred dollars.
So that's why they're asking, so they're asking for two thousand total, or?
Yes.
Or eighteen hundred total for an election year where the, the representatives and stuff like that. I'm supportive of that.
Okay. And I just wanna make sure that we're, I mean, if we're, if we're being supportive of these PLRs, um, I mean, it's gonna contribute to the amount that we're
Right, I am not supportive.
out of balance in the budget.
I'm completely, I'm completely aware of that.
Okay.
I don't know why you would even say that.
Well, well, because we've got a new member here.
Huh?
We've got a new member here that wasn't included in the last budget this year, so explaining is perfectly fine.
Yep, it is, if you're talking, you were talking to me, so I thought, so, uh, on that, though, we gave him, uh, six, he spent six thousand on the other election year. He's asking for eighteen hundred on this election year.
Fourteen hundred, yeah, for a total of two thousand, yes.
I thought you said six hundred.
Six hundred so far, plus fourteen hundred.
Are you asking for twelve above or twelve total?
He is asking for two thousand in total, so he's got six hundred currently, and asking for an additional fourteen hundred.
So fourteen hundred total, 'cause that's for two thousand total. And that makes sense if it was six thousand, the big year, so again, I have no issue with that. Uh, what about the travel? And again, that's just my one opinion, they can say no, but what about, uh, the, you had travel and you also had, uh, training?
Well, we have conferences, right, and we have training specifically related to, um, our financial system that we send our, our team to, and, uh, you know, the cost for, for, um, hotel and accommodations is going up. That's what that's really intended to account for. We're not really planning to increase the number of trips or visits or the number of training sessions, sessions. We're accounting for the increased costs associated with it.
And last year, this year, how much do we have in the budget?
Uh, six hundred.
How much did they spend last year?
Six thousand.
And when we put six hu, hu, no, we're talking about the training?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Give me the numbers for the other thing.
On travel, um, they have six thousand. You're not asking for anything in travel. There, there's nothing being asked for in the, um, the elections, except for the six thousand, on, on the operating side, except for the six thousand dollars, um, for IT trackable equipment.
Hey, you mentioned something about training in, in the request? Or maybe Sheriff mentioned, she was.
There is training, but I believe that's somewhere in a different, um, a different function, so.
I show training and dues seventeen hundred.
Yeah.
It's listed above financial services, so.
Yeah, so that is, um, that's in, I believe that's maybe for Marie or, or you. So there's twelve hundred for travel and then seventeen hundred for training and dues, but there was no explanation as to what it is for in the PLRs.
Okay, and one more time, are those twelve hundred and seventeen hundred above last year's request? Or is that the actual request?
Well, that's the request listed here.
Yeah, once you put it as a PLR, though, usually it's above the amount.
Above, yeah.
But not necessarily always, that's why I've got, gotta have.
In the maintenance level, there's fifteen hundred in travel and one thousand eight hundred and ninety dollars in training and dues under the auditor's office section.
You're asking for twice the amount.
That's about what it shapes up to, yeah.
I wanna hold off on deciding.
Well, I gotta hold off on that one, too, 'cause gotta find out what, you know, what it's based on, uh.
Yeah.
I know things have increased by a hundred percent unless, of course, there's new training and stuff like that. We have a new employee. We have to send them places, we have to do certain things. Uh, you had another one on there for, uh, equipment?
Then there's another one for IT equipment, IT trackable equipment, six thousand, it's granted, grant-funded equipment upgrades.
Oh, it's grant-funded?
But it doesn't give me any, any explanation.
Do you know what?
What, what grant or anything?
Yeah, do you know what grant I've had?
The information security.
Do you know what we have in that?
We've only spent over six, a little over six thousand this year on an eighty thousand dollars, uh, charge.
We have the, the HAVA election security, is that the one?
Information security.
So there's the HAVA election security, or there's the election security enhancement?
I only know it as elections, or information security. We're not planning on spending any HAVA money this year.
Okay, it's in the twenty twenty-six budget at a hundred and thirty-six thousand, six hundred and seventy-four dollars. And then the election security enhancement is at eighty thousand dollars.
Right, that's the information security grant.
That's one, so any, and do you have a beginning fund balance on that?
I don't have a beginning fund balance, all I have is the amount that's in the budget for that, so it's just a flat dollar.
Well, if it's there, I'm supportive, if not, I'm not supportive.
And we get reimbursed for it.
It's a reimbursement?
Yes.
On the election security.
So we spend the money with Secretary of State's approval and then we apply for the reimbursement and get reimbursed.
And you've already got the pre-approval on this?
Yes.
Then I'm supportive.
But you're saying the HAVA election security grant, you're not planning on expending in twenty twenty-six?
Let me see the line item you're talking about, if I may. Oh, you know what that is? That's the, that's part of the money that we're putting into the maintenance and equipment fund to purchase the new election system.
That doesn't make any sense because this is the general fund, not the Fund One oh nine. It's a completely separate fund and there's no transfer request to go from the general fund into the election security, which is how it would have to be done.
I thought, well, I thought that had been worked out.
Can we circle around on that?
Yep.
We'll bring it back one more time.
We'll firm that up.
Okay, at the same time, still send us that information on the RCW source, if it is gonna be one oh nine. If it's not one oh nine, that changes everything. Was there any other stuff you saw outstanding?
Now that I'm looking at last year's budget. I'll have more questions soon, I'm sure. Travel at fifteen hundred last year, and travel at twelve hundred, an additional twelve hundred this year. And then, we go for, oh wait, there's... Training and dues at seventeen hundred. Here it's eighteen ninety.
For last year, yeah, that's what she said. So literally, it's a hundred percent we need to verify. I believe in training and I, but I always say with anybody else, you have to verify that that's right about them. You know, it may have gone up maybe ten percent or twenty percent, but the idea of a hundred percent is tough. But what may have happened is...
I'll get you more of a breakdown.
They may have just put in the request for what they had got before, thinking that that's what they were gonna do, so it could be a mistake. And they may not even actually want that, or they want it.
They might. Of course they do.
Okay, so we're gonna hold off for now on the travel and training for the auditor's function. For the supplies and small equipment and, yes, supplies and small equipment that financial services are asking for, for a total of six thousand three hundred and twenty dollars. Are there any thoughts on that? We haven't discussed that at all.
Okay, so the other six thousand was in elections?
Um, yeah, there's six thousand in grant-funded.
Because he said that was for the auditor, the auditor's not gonna give us back money for this one.
And then, and then there's two more, so a thousand or fifty-three hundred for new monitors and printers, and that's in financial services. Isn't that, doesn't, shouldn't that come out of IT?
No, because IT only pays for things that benefit the entire county, not just one fund. So each fund, we, or fund or department, we budget for any computer replacements out of that fund or department.
The question would be, is Kelly supportive of the replacement? Because he's, or not Kelly.
TJ.
TJ. Kelly does everything else, why not? Is TJ supportive of the replacement?
I haven't asked him.
Can you please call and ask that? If he's supportive of the replacement, then I'm supportive of it. So right now, just to round it up for me, I'm supportive of the original six thousand, I'd be reimbursed, I'm supportive of the IT if TJ's on board. I'm supportive of holding off on the twelve hundred and seventeen hundred until we know what's happening on those. And I'm supportive with reservations on the large equipment until we figure out exactly what fund it's coming from and if there's other competition for that fund, just to have that as a discussion. If it's in his department, I automatically am gonna lean towards it being his department, but if there is competition, especially in times of cuts, we have to look at all the different options because that might make a difference to somebody, be there or not.
Okay, so the fourteen hundred in overtime, I'm sorry, I missed that, did you say?
I left that out, that's why. I personally am comfortable with the fourteen hundred in overtime because that puts that two thousand for the year on a, on a year where we still have, it's not a presidential year, but it's still a big election year.
All right, now we have overtime of ten thousand five hundred sixty-three.
So that's for financial services?
That's for financial services.
And since it's not a PLR, I take it that that's what we've done, that's the normal number?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So yeah, for, for the PLR, she, I just have the fourteen hundred for, for the overtime, the twenty-two fifty-eight in extra help.
And the extra help was for elections also?
Oh, it's elections.
Don't understand how you would need more than what you had last year.
More than what we had in twenty twenty-five?
They don't have elections hardly.
Oh, twenty twenty-four.
Yeah, the number she gave us is twenty twenty-five.
I'll look it up. So I'm gonna reserve on that one.
Question on that, licensing, a thousand overtime for licensing, is it, I mean, that doesn't really fluctuate with elections.
Sometimes we put in overtime to get caught up on recording, archiving. That's typically what happens if we fall behind.
And you already put that in as a cost of your business?
Under, this one was under, the thousand was under licensing, I believe, yeah, licensing and for their maintenance level.
You didn't have it as a PLR, you had it as maintenance?
I'm looking here. Yeah, they don't have any overtime budgeted currently. I mean, really, all of the auditor's salaries and benefits are are looked at as, as one and shared, so that ten thousand is probably excessive for financial services. So it could be, you know, spread out and shared with other auditor functions. Yeah, that makes sense. So we'll hold off on that thousand then for overtime.
Well, I'm okay with it, it's not a PLR, it's a...
It is a PLR, a thousand.
Oh, I thought you said it was maintenance, that's what I was asking.
Oh, no, they have ten thousand dollars that is included in maintenance on their financial services.
So you're calculating ten, not the one he was okay, I got you.
Next is in twenty-four, and they had ten five six also, ten thousand five hundred sixty-three.
Did they also have?
So if we're just the one.
Okay, so I will hold off for more information from you on some of those other items. And then the thousand, though, we are not going to move that forward at this time, is that right, in overtime? Is that what all of you are in agreement on?
A little confused right now, to be honest with you, but on that one.
Let's recap what we've got here, because I know that you were saying...
It does show up on the policy level request.
It does?
Yeah.
Let me share my screen, that might help.
If it shows up with a policy level request, I'm okay with leaving that out, and he says it is, so I'm good with that. The ten thousand, though, is not on the policy level, that's on maintenance, that still stays in. And then, you know, as we look towards it, later on, they can try and justify the thousand in that line. But at this moment, we'll just hold off.
Twenty-four, and they had elections overtime at eight thousand, which makes sense.
Okay, any other discussion?
I just, again, when it comes to the elections overtime cost, we get reimbursed by the jurisdictions, right? Those are, those don't, those aren't paid for.
How does that?
It comes out of our...
We get compensated for...
But how does that work if we don't have it in the budget and they still use it and apply for it? How does that work?
It would have to come out of the expenditure, so if it's not budgeted for, it would just show up as like over expended on that line item. And then it would come out of some other salary savings somewhere else under that department.
And you can still get it back, though, from the reimbursement?
Yes, it doesn't have to be budgeted in order to get it back through reimbursement. The reimbursement would just come into revenue, it wouldn't show in offsetting like refund.
Nope, I got you.
So we do get that back, and then?
So even though it's not in budget, if it's expended, you still get it back. It's just that, you know, you can talk to us about a supplemental at the end of the year?
Yeah.
To have that put in, or it just, we're probably just...
Yeah, we could do it that way.
It would just be eaten up in, in unexpended budget authority.
I was saying, trying to figure out how, if there's not as many items from special districts on the ballot, if we're still doing the overtime, it's still gonna come from us.
Not if, if we, on the thousand, if we don't put it in, it will come out of his bottom-line authority, but we can still get the revenue. And if it ends up that he's that tight on his budget, he can ask for it as a supplemental at the end. So either way, we don't lose the money coming in, nothing personal, but I'm always worried about the money coming in.
Oh, there's nothing personal.
So I want that thousand or however much we can get, that just makes sense. I just want to make sure we don't lose that. And I don't think we would if we just held off on that and if you need to pick up at the end of the year, the supplemental.
So just to recap, I'm gonna follow up with you guys on, on the details behind the request for the twelve hundred and seventeen hundred, right, Randy? And we're gonna verify fund reallocation into Fund One oh nine for the maintenance of equipment for the purchase of new system. Was, what else did we have?
And to make sure that if it is coming out of this other fund, that it is documented properly so that she can, because she can't without that. And for me, the RCW, for all of us, but before I would make, I need to see the...
Yeah, I'll send you both on the auditor's, the election equipment and the O and M fund.
So again, I apologize, I wasn't thinking we're gonna talk about the other items on the budget. I was really focusing, thinking today's discussion would focus on the purchase of the new election system. So before we, before I leave, is there anything else you guys want to talk about as it relates to the new election system?
Well, if it comes out this way, I'm supportive, you know, especially if that's what it's for. But again, if I see that there's a competition for it.
Sure.
We have to have further, we should have further conversations.
Totally agree.
Money in, money out.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Howdy, howdy, Hunter Sheriff.
You guys need to take a break or run right through this?
Get her done.
Do you want me to stay?
You may as well. Yippee, this being my first time doing this, and the sheriff is, actually, I just got a text from him, he's boarding the plane right now. Be here tomorrow sometime, but he gave me permission, believe it or not, to come forward and try and pull some money out of you for the twenty-sixth of August.
I have to appreciate that you prioritized your asks as well.
That's actually something that we've been doing the last couple of years. Travis kind of put us into that mode and it took me, this year I actually figured out between what Jen was doing and what Travis had been doing, figuring out how to put together an actual ask and what's going on. So, do you all have my sheets that I had? I, because it's so much easier for me to look at this and I don't have access to the spreadsheets, and if I tried to look at Jen's from here, I I can't see, it's too small, so. Anyway, kind of moving forward, I guess priority number one was to have a deputy, a new deputy, a new FTE deputy. I don't know that we budgeted for a new vehicle on that. I know that deputies are expensive, that's what they are.
We didn't, we didn't throw that in.
I didn't see it in there.
I didn't put it in there, I forgot to do that.
But we do have extra cars, right?
Kind of, sort of, they keep getting rid. We'd have to replace that at some point in time with another car to go there. We try to keep a minimum of six spares, and right now I think we have three functioning in the fleet, spares, because other ones are getting fixed. But that does create another cost. So position one, of course, we're in about a one to one thousand ratio of law enforcement to the population. And that's just for the unincorporated county. That's even, that's even below the state average of one point four to... One to one point four, is that right?
Point eight, point eight is what we're at.
We're at point eight?
I think so.
Nah.
And the state average is one point...
If you add the city in, we're at point eight, if you take the city out, then we're, I think we're about one to...
That's correct. That's the issue, I've always had, so you're correct, the sixty-nine thousand is what we have in front of us, I was showing the whole county, including the city and stuff. But if you take out the city, then we're right about there.
So I'm trying to be fair about that.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that.
So, and again, it's expensive, I get it, there is an option that, you know, we might be able to fund this position, we being the commission, through opioid funds. I don't know what that would look like, I know we've been in talks with Dave about what it would look like on opioid settlement funds, to fund a full-time DARE officer that would start to put together an entire DARE program for all of the county schools, to include the city ones and getting the city involved. It's a, it's a large-scale project, it's going to take a few years to get it up and running for all of the schools.
I think one thing we need to remember is that, I hate that word, opioid monies, the settlement money is not a reoccurring. At one point, it's gonna be fun.
Yes, absolutely, you're right, but I think it's what, ten years, ten-year plan?
I believe so.
Very, we don't know how much is coming in over those years.
And then we've got the new one also, so we need to have, what state to give us them?
Yeah, we're gonna be setting up a process. I can tell you, I've had conversations, I think we probably all have about that, I'm supportive. When I talked to him, I know I told him to your...
Matt?
Yeah, old chief, DARE officer for the state here.
To your man?
Yeah, I'm supportive, I've requested that he make his request for the full amount, I would think one fifty, told him to have it all in, full amount at three on a three-year basis. And I do that same request for anybody that wants to apply for those funds, because we can keep track of them on a three-year basis and not over expend and see if the monies can keep coming from there. I know I'm supportive of that still, but I know we've never discussed it, discussed it. But mine was a support based on the idea of one fifty over, for a three-year period and then we I don't know if the commission stopped that though, so.
I don't know where, how, who or how we access those funds, I don't know where that, that's held and what...
Yeah, go ahead, what, that general fund, it's...
It's, I think it's in Fund One seventeen, if I remember correctly, which is community support services or something. And how we access that, we could do a transfer, just kind of, kind of like we do the treatment sales tax. We do like a billing to that fund and then a transfer out of the general, or out of Fund One seventeen into the general fund.
So although it looks like it's heavy on one side, it's not, it's fed back in the other, so it doesn't hit our bottom line by doing it, it just...
So that the community supports our assist fund?
Yeah, Fund One seventeen, yeah. I believe that's where those funds are sitting.
And again, after sitting here watching... And again, after sitting here watching, I understand the budget issues you guys got, I, I watched last week's. It was last week's or two weeks ago where, yeah, the public defender's in here and talking about the potential of one point six at a minimum and it's, it's, it's a big hit, so. Priority one and priority two, they're or, and of course, any of these are up to you, but priority one's a deputy or community service officer that we can put into the front office of the sheriff's office to start taking in walk-in calls and relieving some of the full deputies from some of the work that they have at the main office there and hopefully get them back out on the road sooner, faster and keep them on the road. It's cheaper than a deputy, there's no car involved, but it's still a deputy and it's got a bad wave effect into your issues that you were bringing up earlier.
How many telephone reports do you get?
I don't know, I mean, we get a lot of calls for service via telephone and that person would handle telephone calls for service. That person can also back up on the, the online reporting process that goes on, because we have the, the CSO in the north end that primarily does walk-ins up there and then does a lot of vetting on the online reporting, reports and pushes them along.
But you don't have that here, just the CSO up there for the walk-ins?
Yeah, CSO up in, in the north end, that was, oh, is that five years ago that, five, six years ago that the commission gave us that position? Specifically to man and, and keep the north end office open for the public, instead of just having all the volunteers.
And also, with new commissioner, also, the more support staff we provide, the more the deputy can actually be our deputy.
Right.
Talking to me speaking?
Yeah, we had, we had a lot of.
Patrol.
Yeah, a lot of patrolling, yeah, we had a lot going on where they're in doing all paperwork for, longest time they did everything. That was when I first came here, I mean, everything. They were the detective, they were the head paper pusher, they were everything.
They're still pushing a lot of paper. Any other comments on that second priority? So on the third ones, I keep trackables, I know that I've, I've got twenty-five hundred for vehicle printers, that's the printers to outfit some of my detective vehicles so that they can be writing search warrants out on the road and printing them out versus in the office and then have them come back, makes them more efficient. Seventy-five hundred for a mobile fingerprint scanner, I'm gonna pull that, I'm gonna have my guys look for a grant for that. It is a useful and functional tool, but it's not used all that much right now. I think in the future, we're gonna see a lot more of that and there's some discussions about iris scanners coming out. It's a whole new technology that is going to be out there for criminal justice in the future. I do need a thousand dollars for a new iPad for the Pharaoh scanner.
So I see both of those, now that he's removed the, the middle one, I see both of those as maintenance, I think it's it's needed for the business that we're doing out there now.
So is it one thousand or three thousand?
It's thirty-five hundred.
Thirty-five hundred.
Twenty-five hundred for the printer and a thousand for the iPad.
That makes sense to me. So, okay, no, fifty-five hundred's.
Thirty-five.
Oh, thirty-five?
Yeah.
Yeah, we.
I don't wanna be accused of stealing now.
Okay, so we have the car printers for detective cars, twenty-five hundred.
Yep.
And then the Pharaoh iPad, three thousand.
That's what I was asking about.
You've got a thousand?
Uh, that must be, that's a misprint, so just make that a thousand dollars, there's no way an iPad's three thousand dollars.
That's what I was questioning.
I was going like this. On the mobile fingerprint scanner, I know that there's, there's apps on a cellphone that will do that, is that something that?
It's not.
Or is that a missable report?
I don't know on your question and maybe, but the ones that we would be getting access CGS information, CGS, criminal justice information, so it's connected into the same stuff where we run names and dates of birth and stuff. So then it's, gives you a, a good ID. And travel, travel's got, we're tied in with, it's where we dump a lot of our training dollars into at the same time. Nate, you wanna go over that?
Sure. So the four thousand for the evidence officer training, we have two evidence officers now and one of them's fairly new. And so there's a lot more kind of courses and training as they're getting called out more frequently for, you know, these major incidents, they require more training to make sure that they're in line with everything going on.
Did you do it last year? Do you have it in your budget last year?
Last year was, last year they had twenty thousand dollars.
Twenty thousand total?
Total, for travel. That was the adopted was twenty thousand?
Yes.
But you've got a lot more going on as well, right?
Yeah, this we've, this one, it's, when we, the request came in from the folks, they didn't split it up into travel and then tuition costs, they just bundled it together and so we're having a hard time separating it, it, it's a a function of the bars lines, which is frustrating, we know that we need four thousand to get these folks.
I like how you two look at each other like.
Damn accountants. You threw me for a loop, I forgot where I was at, sorry.
But to go from twenty thousand adopted to basically a hundred fifteen thousand.
Yep.
It's a big ask, it is.
Can I ask you, I'm not nobody or nothing, I'm just one, but can I ask you to go through, in the, not right now, go through and look for the ones that are the most important and necessary, the ones that have to happen? So that you can bring it back to us and justify it by what the law has changed and what, I'd have a hard time with this one, I just. But I do know that everything changes on you guys and there are some things that you have to have that was not budgeted for the, the last year, I just need to kind of see what they are.
And if any of this.
Fair enough, I'm sorry.
If it's mandated, I would love to have that number two, because then I can share it with WASC and our legislators.
Well, I mean, your, all your patrol tactics now is basically every three years, all the officers have to refresh in that patrol tactics training. So, what I've been trying to do is roll through about a third of the department every year, so we can stay up on top of that. But as, you know, we keep hiring more people, there, we're gonna have to just continue to keep getting that training done. And that takes me instructors, you know.
We are doing it in-house, it does cost us overtime to do it in-house on, on the instructors. When we have the, the student deputy, whatever, on regular for the most part.
Do you start charging other departments for training? Well, you said you're training them in-house, and so if we can, if, if we've got the deputies or the trainers here, can we charge Thursday County kids that come?
That's the same question I had, no, I agree, that's the same question I had with the dare, if they're talking about bringing them in and training them, is there a revenue stream that could come with that?
I would say.
I, I would say that's a rough one, because there's many times that we ship people off, they don't charge us. So there's a, a mutual beneficial.
I get that.
And for the twenty-four hour in-service that we're talking about, it's, it's free. You know, it's, it's just, there are, you know, minimum staffing requirements for us that when we pull people off the road to send them to training, we've got to backfill those spots, so.
And some of the twenty thousand that we already adopted already goes to doing this for one-third of them already per year. So I'd like to see, you know, that one, I can see how you justify that, get everybody caught up, especially for, but the thing is, is if I looked at it that way, I'd ask you to find a way or ask Jen to find a way to keep track of that, because we wouldn't want to do that every year. It's one thing to get caught up and to have an expenditure to get caught up, it's another, just establish that as your baseline budget.
Well, the problem is it's every three years, so.
So, so what, what he's saying is literally, we're taking one-third of the department this year, twenty-five thousand dollars. One-third of the department next year, twenty-five thousand dollars, one-third of the department next, the following year, twenty-five thousand. So it's, it's going to be an ongoing reoccurring cost.
But if he's been doing a third every year and we only have a budget of twenty thousand now, how does that?
This is fairly new and I think we're into our first year was last year of.
Yeah, this will be our second year.
That, that's my point then, so we're already doing it with, within the twenty thousand, unless you're taking money out of the other funds. And if that's the case, then show us that, because that's what I'm gonna wanna see.
That's coming out of our overtime budget and that's why you're seeing such a large overtime budget.
It's because we're, we're doing this without having funds there.
And so that would reduce your overtime actually?
It should, yes, hopefully. If you can promise that all the bad people will not, will stop doing bad things, then yes.
Absolutely.
So break it up further, is what you're asking?
Uh, yes, but prioritize absolutely what's necessary, I don't know how I, and I'm just one person, I don't know how I could choose that. And I want to be able to make sure our people are trained.
Um, if I move on to the fifth priority, is that okay? Okay, so, yes, this is a huge ask, really, the evidence storage building, this is to put it on your radar. This, we need to start looking at this to build out a larger building for the future, we are running out of room and.
That's what we just got you, right?
Um, yeah, but it still wasn't conducive enough. It's, we can add a building on that property there and make it work, but right now, no.
Can I, can I ask you guys to look at, sharpening that pencil? The only reason why I'm saying that is, I understand it's for the long term, but if you get closer half of that, we'll say, it doesn't necessarily have to be long term, not because we are hurting on general fund, but this is something that could probably come out of our REIT. Of which there's money available to do that, but at the numbers you're talking, I don't see that even being realistic or possible, but if you can get it down, especially at the beginning, one year you have a big, nice giant building that's built and the next year you start looking at, you know, improving it and stuff like that, that's something to think of.
No.
It may be of value to partition out the type of evidence.
Yeah.
Because, I mean, we obviously have special, special evidence requirements for the high value items.
Yes.
Money, guns, those kinds of things, we would have room to expand that specifically if the other evidence of lower value could be moved to a different facility.
And that's the benefit of having under Sheriff Fisher.
Firearms, we can take rid of them.
But we would have room to expand the firearms in the current location if we can move the lower, lower value items to a different location, offset.
And shell can be a lot more reasonable, you know, to put up a shell that we can work on in the future and still take care of what you need.
The other really cool thing that happened this year in REIT is, and I don't think I talked about this publicly, REIT one and two can now be used for the same purposes. It used to be that REIT one was for facilities, REIT two was for parks and infrastructure and, yeah, now the, the uses are the same.
Which is awesome, if the legislature.
So with that being said, there's some monies available, maybe look at it.
I do need an alarm system to replace the one that's in the existing buil-, uh, building at the sheriff's office. It's over, well, since oh, dying oh-ten is when we moved in, put that alarm system in.
I see that.
Fourteen thousand?
Huh?
Is that the fourteen thousand?
No, that's the ten thousand, I'm still on priority five, ten thousand.
I see that as a maintenance myself, we gotta have that stuff available on our buildings.
And that's something that could be paid out of REIT also.
REIT as well, yep.
So is that what you're thinking, do you pay it out of REIT?
That's what I think too.
As, putting as, as maintenance now coming out of REIT.
Okay, what do you think?
Yeah, I'm, I'm just riding along there for, for the most part, let's say.
So we have an old trailer on the next item, it's a enclosed trailer that we store a lot of our equipment for EVOC in. It was actually a trailer that we had picked up from a, not an impound, a forfeiture and it's fifteen years, whatever better. It's broken down, it's time for a replacement.
So I wonder, I know during COVID, our health department.
We just lost another one, I heard, it got stolen.
Another one?
Again?
That's what, Dave said that one.
Well, then maybe we should give them all to the police department so that they don't get stolen, I'm sorry.
We had one a month or so ago, we have one even newer than that.
I think it's a month, okay, yeah, but no, we lost one, she's, she's talking about another time, we lost one back at the COVID time when they took all our stuff and.
That was our radar trailer, I think, yeah.
No, no, no.
Department had a trailer that was stolen that was found up in Kitsap County with a dead body.
Yeah, that was the first time, right?
Yes, that was the first time.
And then the second time, there's no surprise.
No surprise, yes.
Wasn't it coroner's trailer? Coroner's trailer?
Could be now.
I like to think about that a little bit, but that's just me, I'm maybe there.
Um, there's fourteen thousand dollar requests for surveillance cameras for investigative purposes. I'm gonna ask my guys to go back and look and see if we can't find a grant and use our grant rider test, see if we can't pair that up with the other.
Oh, that would make sense.
Yeah, equipment. And then flock cameras, I don't even wanna think about that right now, there's a lot of problems going on in flock and a lot of complaints going on, so I'm not even gonna discuss that.
So to wrap it up in my briefs, I can, I try to keep track of all monies. We're hoping you can come back with a different provision of a shell for, under the, maybe three or a K for an additional building that we'd have further discussion on that. That ten thousand for the alarm system is gonna be coming out of REIT, but it's put into maintenance, so then we don't have to discuss that again.
Yep.
The other ones over there.
Six, UAVs, we need to replace two of the UAVs. And I know that the, the adopted was fifteen thousand, that's small tools all in general. So we're looking at about seven thousand dollars for two new UAVs that drones. For the law enforcement work, it's not the SWAT ones, these are the ones that'll be used for crime scenes, it'll be used in our search and rescue areas. It'll be used for overflights of SWAT missions.
We just crashed one on Thursday, too.
How bad did we crash it?
Anything that flies is eventually gonna crash.
It's a lot of trees around here.
I see these as extremely important, the question that I have is, is there any other fund we can take that out of?
I mean, definitely not REIT.
We can't have law boards, we can't have them.
I can't think of any, any.
And even if we have to get it this year out of your unexpended budget authority, that's still money that comes out of the general fund, so it wash one way or the other.
If I could get one, it'd be really beneficial, I know that we destroyed one when we did a search and rescue.
Thirty-five hundred?
Yeah.
I'm supportive of that.
Just tell them not to crash anymore.
Ah, good luck.
Pat, you too?
Yeah, I mean, that thirty-five hundred is not that, it's not that.
You know, I keep coming to you guys and just asking for more and more and I apologize, I, I wish I could, well, I can bring you some, some decent news. This year, we generated to the end of September eighty thousand dollars in revenue that's not in our revenue lines for DOC. DOC, is that correct?
How much is that?
DOC revenues for us, we've generated eighty thousand dollars so far, is that correct?
Eighty-one thousand five hundred.
I caught that in, some of the stuff that we've had brought to us. What we want for a long time, we're used to bringing huge money, but then we went with none for years and years and years and now you're starting to bring some back in.
Well, that's thanks to the jail, but again, we are having expenditure on the other side and I'll bring that up here.
It always does.
We would really like to initiate another K-nine deputy. Do I have two K-nines teams, it's not, should be one extra K-nine team, right? Or was it two? It was one.
One addition.
I don't know why I've got two in there, but.
Is the cost still the same or we're talking two?
No, the cost is still the same, it's gonna cost us about twenty thousand. Again, this is now means, means that we'll have some more expenses in cars, to have to outfit the cars to the K-nine standard. It will take a deputy off the road for a while while we train him to the four hundred plus hours.
Is this twenty thousand to do that or is this twenty thousand for?
Twenty thousand's about the cost of a dog now.
Absolutely, okay, so it, it, it's two separate things, because that, you're looking at fifty grand or so, thirty-five to outfit?
Well, you already have the vehicle, right, and so you'd just be outfitting it to?
Yes, we would have to outfit it, but there's gonna be a cost to that, yeah.
And the cost, so the twenty thousand dollars cost is for outfitting?
Or the dog?
Or the dog?
That's what.
Well, the, here's the thing.
The last dog was eighteen grand, so.
The last dog was eighteen grand, so.
But that came out of donations.
That came out of donations. That's where I was thinking was the donations, 'cause the folks like to donate for the dog, um, the community does, not so much for the, the rest of the staff.
So would the twenty thousand be for training of the officer?
Uh, yeah, the officer and the dog at the same time.
Yeah.
The dog training the officer.
But then there's additional cost of, what do you think, thirty, thirty-five?
For?
Um, to outfit?
Uh-huh.
Um, I mean...
'Cause our regular vehicles.
Probably an additional five on top of what we already do, just for the K-nine engaged.
Yeah, I don't think the K-nine, the...
The door popper, the heat alert.
Unless we were purchasing an entirely new.
Saying, you already have a vehicle or we get the...
We would, one of the assigned vehicles for twenty twenty-six, we would just have to readjust the, the quote on the, the outfit on it.
So, right, could you do it with the twenty thousand total or?
We can make it work.
I hate to spend more money, but I happen to be a huge, huge, huge fan of, of a dog protecting our people and going in there instead of sending our people and everything else. What do you think?
Well, this is where it would be really cool to have that fun balance, you know, in the general fund, so we could see how much K-nine dollars there are available possibly.
Do we have, no, do we have, what K-nine, are you talking about spending the monies that are donated or? So I have no problem with separating line items. You know that already. I, I like that. But I also know that even if we knew that, doesn't mean we could do this, because if they give us the money for a purpose of buying a dog, I don't know that we could use it for...
For, for outfitting, yeah.
Yeah, although it doesn't mean that I don't support what you just said, 'cause I would like to know, we should be keeping track of anything as donations. We really should. It, it's smart for us to help protect us and everything from the state owner. If somebody gives us a donation or whatever, there should be a line item in there so we can track it. But you already know that so far with the ones that are here, we're not gonna offset what you're getting because you have that. If you have a place to spend it, uh, within the parameters, that doesn't bother me, but it would be nice to know. But I, I don't wanna spend the money, but I'm supportive of this because the long, the long haul of protecting our, our deputies and stuff like that and how much work to get done with them, it's like getting an extra body for twenty thousand.
Right, so so far we're at?
And I think I've got more than one type, though.
No, that would be ongoing.
Well, it's not, um...
Because you have the dog every year. Don't they have to get retrained also?
The, the daily cost of it, yeah, but not to the same extent and not to the same. It's, there's a weekly training or...
Re, research just annually and we do that free in-house.
In-house, okay.
And then we'll have donations for some of that stuff too. Let's just be initial. Are you supportive of that? I am.
Oh, yeah, I, I, K-nines are awesome.
They are.
They do great job. Okay, so move that over.
Good investment.
Uh, professional services front office. So this was probably a REIT request. Um, we've put in for, with, or talked with Kelly about it, uh, last year or two years ago was it, to remodel the front office and take out that, the way the doorway's set and just restructure it so we've got a better use of all that space in there. It's gonna have to take out a wall or two and reorient some things in there. It's, uh, roughly a forty-four thousand dollar request.
Can we hold off on that one while Kelly to come in and, and talk just about that one?
Okay. Um, I know times, uh, not one that you guys are excited about. We don't have a, a line item for the overtime for evidence officers at this time. They're getting called up more and more to help process the scenes and it takes workload off the detectives, uh, makes them a little bit more efficient being the, uh, detectives.
I'd be supportive of two thousand, just as a, as a, the rest of it would come out, out of their general.
Two grand?
Well, I'm, I'm just talking. I've still gotta get the others.
I, I...
I would go up too.
Unless Pat argues, he, he doesn't talk. It's like he's really quiet.
He's trying to catch up.
What happened in the game?
What game?
Your, your charges. Did they win or lose?
Oh, they won.
Oh, okay. Just checking.
Every time I hear the charge, I think my brother who's dead now. I just, we love him so much.
Patrol overtime, I realize it's a, a massive ask and I, I know that we've been able to cover it over the last few years, based on the open positions that we've had either in, uh, patrol and or in the jail. Um, we're kinda heading for about four hundred and twenty-seven thousand in overtime this year. Um, I'm putting it on the, the radar that, uh, you know, as we fill these positions, which we have two open positions left in patrol and I think we've got six in the jail. They're getting ready to, uh, for the background and a couple more in the jail right now. As this year goes on, we're not gonna have that, uh, squishy fund in the backend, which means we're gonna have to really sharpen our knives on our end and watch what our folks are doing. We understand that. Um, and if it's one of those things where we're ending up coming to you later next year to go, this is where we're at and this is why we're here, I understand it. But it's, I want you to be aware of where we're at and how much this is actually costing. I think it's a, a fair conversation to have with you.
As for myself, uh, I'm not supportive. Uh, I would expect that, uh, as we bring people on, that we're supposed to go down and more people will be down. That's been always the conversation that we're having. And, uh, I would expect it to be handled more in-house. Uh, uh, that's mine.
So I, I would comment that, um, over the years, and a hundred and eighty's been kinda the standard that you've given us for five, six, seven years. The contracts that you've also signed on, the CBAs, the value of those have gone up. Thus my, my value or the amount of hours that I get out of this has changed. So to expect one for one, it's, um, just be aware of it.
And, and I am aware, that isn't, uh, what I expect. I, I just know how it works to work within the system that you already have. Going back in my memory banks, knowing that, uh, when there was no control over it, it was quite often seven fifty and eight, eight fifty, uh, and it was only in July. So that's what I think in my head when I deal with it. Uh, as we get closer, I'm always interested in, I watch the numbers and have the conversation, but if possible, that's why we have the sign, the, the signpost is the holy sit.
There's, it's two hundred and eight actuals in twenty-five so far.
As of right now, well, as of, as of June.
Halfway through the year.
And then you've got holiday overtime.
So holiday overtime's on the next, uh...
Yeah, I was just looking at all the totals here.
But overall.
The overall salary savings this year is looking to be probably around a million dollars.
Yeah.
Overall, and I, I can't argue that, um, but we will fill these last two positions in patrol and then where we end up with, um, jail, they've been hiring. And I, I am hoping by the middle of next year, we are full with our jail staff.
Then hopefully we won't need as much overtime and stuff, but at the, at the same time, uh, although, you know, I appreciate it. One thing we have to keep in mind as the commissioners though, is although I'm tight on this, I also have to keep aware of it because this is where it hurt us in the past many years ago. All of a sudden we cut it to the point where there was no unexpendable budget authority left and we didn't see that coming. It was the first time in history that that has happened. We didn't find. But I don't think we're there yet. I think we're in a good space still.
I think I would be comfortable going a hundred and eighty is what we adopted in twenty-five. If we do that one eighty and then if there's more needed, come back.
Understood.
Cause you're gonna have overtime. I don't, regardless of how many deputies that you have on the road, you're still gonna have overtime.
Court time, uh, incidents happen. Um, we had a SWAT call out. Ten people showed up this weekend. Uh, that's a three hour call out for those ten people. It's, you know, those things add up. Patrol overtime, uh, or, uh...
Be well with it, just so you know. I don't see it as a negative. You guys do very well with it, uh, uh, just think back to when we switched over to the one to the million and eighty and you guys were documenting everything and we had, uh, move funds from the road fund over and then after you guys started documenting, cleaned everything up with that. It was actually very well to the point where we felt we shouldn't even be cleaning it up anymore. It was too good. Don't need to share it with this type of thing.
My battery died. We've been here for a while.
Mine too. I have Chris printed out and bringing it to you.
Um, if I can run through, the patrol, uh, holiday overtime is just, it's purely underfunded for an amount that is almost, you can almost guarantee what it's going to be every year and it's the same with...
How much, did we have, we even, in the past? Cause now what computers did, so you...
Eight, uh, adopted is eighty-five.
One, like a evidence holiday?
I'm at, I'm at PLR eleven, sorry.
Okay.
So adopted was eighty-five.
Adopted was eighty-five. And we're, we're asking, we're asking for another hundred and ten on that. Um...
For an additional hundred and ten?
An additional hundred and ten, so it takes you to one ninety-five. This is a, an issue where, you know, you know how many holidays there are. The contract says that they get X.
Yeah.
Um, this should start to be, you, whether it's this year, next year, you take some incremental steps to, to repair it.
Increase it.
Um, that would be the, the right way to go.
I'd be supportive of increasing it from eighty-five to one twenty-five total and seeing that as maintenance.
I'd go one fifty.
One fifty?
If, for total, 'cause we're already, we adopted?
Eighty-five.
Eighty-five. Actuals were a hundred and five.
No, that was through.
Through two.
That's for half the year.
Yeah, and then they, it still stays within all their wages.
We've still got holidays coming this.
Yeah, but...
So what do you think it'll be at the end of the year?
But it stays within the wages part, so it doesn't, it's just keeping the balloon, gives a little bit of air in the balloon there. Work of them. That's why I suggested here twenty-five.
I wish I brought that spreadsheet that I had, but it was looking like about ten to twelve thousand every month in overtime costs, um, on the patrol side. Depending on, it, now you would have the months where you had no, uh, overtime, uh, holiday overtime is what I'm referring to. If you had a month that didn't have a holiday, yeah, it was nothing was there. So you, you were looking at, uh, a whole lot more.
Yeah, but you come up on November, which is got several holidays.
If I can live with a hundred and, a hundred and twenty-five, uh, this year and then in twenty-seven, you guys keep an open mind about, uh, bouncing it up a little more. I would greatly appreciate that.
You'll probably have to remind us.
I may not be here then. No, I'll still be here going through the process, but somebody else will be running the, the show, I hope.
Hold it with the outcome.
Again, if they're supportive of that, I'm supportive of that.
Um, evidence holiday, I'm supportive.
You don't have anything currently or it's just a thousand dollars or a gastro? Did I read right?
That's all, that's what we're asking for, a thousand dollars.
Did you guys read this?
Good.
Okay. Uh, jail holiday overtime, it says, uh, four thousand dollar ask. Actually, I, I fat fingered it or I didn't.
Do you miss a zero?
I missed a zero and we have consistently been at a hundred thousand a year on the jail holiday overtime. Um, and again, the jail currently has six open positions. We're still able to cover it. I, I would ask that we do kinda something similar to what you did with the, uh, patrol side of the house and, and step it up, uh...
I'd be supportive of twenty thousand.
Increase?
Yep.
So up to eighty?
Yeah, I, I think we could live in that and...
And again, I still expect that your overtime goes down as, as the positions fill.
As the positions fill, that goes up.
That's up to you guys. You need to do something on that to make that happen.
The jail?
Yeah.
Jail, uh, PLR thirteen.
I'm showing that it's four thousand dollars.
Yeah, yeah, I fat fingered it and missed it. That was the one that I said, hey, I think I missed something.
She's going, are you kidding me? He just gave him forty-five.
He's requesting forty thousand above.
Okay.
But we're at eighty.
They're gonna give us an extra twenty to move it to eighty. So what I understand?
Yes.
Okay.
That's what I understood.
I understood.
So, last one, um, I, again, understand that, uh, what we got here, um, it's a, literally to have somebody, have five people consistently in Nisqually for the entire year, it's gonna be about a quarter million dollars. Right now, everything comes out of the wage and benefits side of the house. Um, we haven't moved any money over from, uh, the current costs of Nisqually. I would love to have a specific line for it, whether you put money into it or not. Um, that way we can, uh, whatever benchmarks over the year, come back to you and say, well, we've expended X out of, uh, expended X for, um, Nisqually and, uh, we need...
Says here you got ten thousand dollars in there.
Yeah, that's for professional services. It's a, we see, we need to...
You're asking for a special. Jim, what do you think about, uh...
I, I don't think that we need a separate line item for it. I think we're trying to get away from creating separate line items for things. I mean, we could, it wouldn't be the end of the world, but...
Be cool to track it, to see where we're at, I think.
Except for they'd have to move it every time it ended there too.
That's the, current problem is, is we're paying the bill out of it and we're paying it out of our operations side of the house, but it's, it's not until November that we're gonna end up going, okay, hey, Jim, we've expended, uh, three hundred thousand dollars out of, uh, operations. We need to move it over.
Then it has to come to us because you're allowed fifty.
Well, it's, yeah, I, I, yeah.
Yeah.
I can say, I can say from historical experience that it makes it very difficult to manage the operations side of the house, especially when it comes to some of these things that they've been talking about for training and a lot of, training and equipment and some of these things when you know you can't expend money on the things that you need because you have to fund, uh, the Nisqually and then by the time you get to the end of the year, you don't have time to go through the process of getting money transferred and then going through a purchase process to get those things that you didn't buy earlier in the year. It just creates this cycle.
I think we kept you for spending it. That wasn't an accident.
Don't think we know. I'm just simply saying that if we're going to accurately reflect how we're spending the money and then try to make it, I mean, we can, we're artificially inflating some areas so that we can, so that we can fix a problem that we've created ourselves.
So again, I'm hoping this number goes down as we fill up. I'm not a fan of, uh, of adding, I still am open-minded to whether or not to create a line and if we did a certain amount, just, I think maybe we should talk about that a little bit more. Uh, I have a question. The body scanner contract is twenty-five thousand. It is now set to maintenance level.
Uh, scratch that. That shouldn't have been in there.
Okay, so she already put that in maintenance?
I don't know what, yeah. I don't know.
Cause that, I was gonna say, that would be important one. So personally, as for me, I'd, I'd like to think about that a little bit more and have some internal conversations about a line and if we did create a line, then we probably knock the bottom down.
Long afternoon here for you guys. Um, any questions?
This is slightly off topic, but one of the things that they, uh, when I was over in Wenatchee, they were talking about what they had done in their jails, just jails with monitoring inmates. They have in every cell, they monitor the health continuously and Riskpool has a lot of money. They're happy to pay for those things.
We, we started part of that with the wristbands. Help me out on this, Travis, because I wanna listen to part of it, but that was a voluntary function of the, uh, inmates and, uh, they did not take it very well.
This is not voluntary. It's, it's actually part of the cell that the inmate has, no, they're just being monitored by, I'm not exactly sure how it's doing it, but it monitors their, their breathing, their heart rate, a, a lot of...
It, it's the same thing as he's talking about. We, we've cut up the wristbands, so this does the wristband without being on them.
Yeah, and it, I, I get that and I, that was really expensive if I remember right.
Well, that, I, I really, it is, but Riskpool is like picking up the tab for some of these jurisdictions because the amount of money they're saving in the long run by not paying out on huge lawsuits when somebody dies in jail. It's like, wait, it costs us less to put these in in every, in every cell than it did just paying out on two lawsuits.
And you may not be able to do every cell. I think they do a reimbursement up to a certain amount. You may be able to do a couple, but at least you'll know which ones you can put the dangerous people in. I hope you will look into it because, you know, we've been pretty good about avoiding the lawsuits and stuff like that, but this could really help us and, and... And knowing that somebody's gonna lose it on your person before they walk in that door sure is a beautiful thing to have.
It's always worth looking for the counter argument to it and often that is going out to the corrections professionals, because a lot of times they've had experience with this and they'll find out the. The legal loophole that they can go through to not have that type of monitoring of those kind of things and you'll end up spending a bunch of money on something you can't use. I think the wristbands was one of those things where Riskpool was all about spending money on it and making it available and then once you get through the process, you find out. Well, the inmates can just say no and none of them are interested in doing it, so the ones that you would wanna, wanna, wanna monitor anyways, you can't use that system and so. It's a cool idea and would work great if only legally you can do it and so many times we see the same problem, so. But again, technology changes.
We'll invite Riskpool down to come and bring that presentation and, uh, have you guys come visit with us. Let's have that discussion. It's definitely worth it to have the discussion. When we did the wristbands, they did pay for it and stuff like that, but it did, of course, a great idea and it worked a little bit, but then. As I said, unintended consequences and issues, but this was their answer to those unintended consequences. That's what we just explained it.
But a lot of times, we have early technology, which is a good proof of concept, which then translates into something that is very usable. This could actually be the next generation of that where the wristbands do the legal constraints, made it so that it wasn't, wasn't very usable, but. They moved on to the next band of technology, which has no legal constraints and has the same benefits. So, you know, sometimes you have to let that. Technology evolve to the point where you don't have the legal constraints around it, so.
Yep. That it?
Just a thought.
That was a good thought.
That was a great thought.
Love looking at the new stuff, always have.
And I, I wish I had thought to say it. So it was a great idea. We'll get him in here to have a meeting with this thing.
See how they pay for it, too.
Yeah. I think it's only a few units will pay for it and then we have to pay for the.
I know, I know that we had a discussion at one of the command staff meetings at some point in time about the two. And then there was something that was just astronomical on the putting the one system in to the building versus the, the bands were cheap, fifteen thousand dollars or something.
Fifteen, they were ninety.
Yeah, one was paid for, one wasn't at the time, too.
Is that what it was?
Yeah, and I think probably it's exactly what I was just explaining. Riskpool was finding out that the, the one technology is just not backable, but it's still valuable. Risk mitigation, if it can be used, so let's move on to the one that doesn't have the legal constraints to it, so.
I agree. Thank you.
Thank you.
I assume we're done.
I.
I, I have no more.
If you're done.
Don't be the chair for this.
You're done, then we're done with you. Thank you. Thank you. So that brings us to the end of our agenda for today.
Madam Chair, move to your table.
Six.
Thank you, guys.